Tell me to take a few.
It's up to you, I was gonna ask Sheldon to do some of the and. Take you about half hour to do it.
Okay.
Maybe a little more than that, forty-five minutes. Have you done the surveys?
I've read them, but I haven't actually.
So go online and do one first.
Yeah, I'm getting started with the read, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, and do one for Lori.
Yeah, we're doing.
And then.
And my kid, my kids have started as well. Yeah, yeah, they thought it was interesting though.
Yeah, okay. How do the rest of our people are? So I wrote a copy of the resolution. I haven't highlighted it or anything like that, but at least I have.
Okay.
You know, whereas adopting and updating the planning documents, including possible land use ordinances, created for future land use. So I think this will apply for Ryan Fisher.
Ryan's.
May now therefore be resolved. That the reason should be limited during this time. Based on the. As part of the submission of applications. To the planning commission, such applications press.
Hey Sheldon. Yeah, let's take some credit. You deserve it, we're gonna miss you.
I know, I say this every time. We need you to talk.
Talk right into it.
Yeah.
That's why it's.
Last time was so bad, I have like no audio from, not yours, but.
To the phone.
It was so bad, and we, I am really working on trying to replace these, it's just like impossible right now.
Well, you only got a week left, right?
I know. Yeah, so, just right into those mics.
So kiss the microphone, basically.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so when they're up as high as I can get them. And it's really good, if you're there, it's, you know.
Okay.
Just kind of.
Right there.
Right there, right there.
Yeah, and I think it's, yeah, you guys do better than I do.
Yeah, because they sit back. We don't take that out of it.
Hey Amanda.
Hey.
Hello. So Shauna was just asking us to make sure that when we speak, we.
Swallow the mic.
Yeah, kiss the mic, kiss the microphone. So.
So this is zoomed too?
Yeah, it will be zoomed as well. Because I think we've got a lot of citizens. Sheldon, would you have time to input some of these surveys?
Go ahead and fill them out like I'm filling them out online.
Yeah.
I got something.
Just over and over.
Just so you don't think you're getting picked on.
And Amanda, would you have time to do some?
Of course.
I'll make the adjustments as necessary.
Tell me how it been.
We're being recorded.
That was a joke.
That was a joke.
But, so.
Jokes, that's good, we need some humor these times.
We do, we do. Did anyone have any questions on, on the minutes?
I don't know, they were pretty straightforward.
We needed to. Strike out, yeah. This advisory committee minutes.
Oh, yeah.
You know, on the back, these are just a lot of, and I thought that they were good things to work, to look at again, you know, our homework thoughts. We, and, and one of them was that we want to refer to the general plan more in the future.
More often, so it's more of a working document.
Yeah, instead of.
Instead of just sitting there and.
Creating it and filing it away, we need to refer to it when we're, when we're talking about different.
I agree.
Um, items.
I, I like to.
You have both ways, I'm moving this a little, I'd say, I always avoid that mic.
Have we even started yet, or?
Our work sessions started.
Okay, I like the one that Malone, what's his first name, Brad?
Matt.
Matt, Matt Malone talked about, we kind of evaluate ourselves too, you know.
Mm-hmm.
Let people know.
What's that?
You know, how to do it.
Yeah, the suggestion of a rating system when reviewing the elements of the general plan.
Yeah.
And, and rating ourselves too.
Absolutely.
So, just some, just some things that we probably oughta, as a planning commission.
I liked it too, I think in the general plan, it does state committees, and, and I know people have reached out to the community before, like, hey, get on the committee, but
Ignore and where.
I think more so now than ever, people need to participate in those committees, whether it's parks and trails, or, or whatever.
Or, yeah.
Because it's in there, it, it says that we need to utilize that.
Right.
Yeah, we just have to.
And, 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 and once again, that's one of the things we need to think about, about referring to the general plan.
Yeah.
What is a planning commission, are we falling short in some areas?
Sure.
And are we, are we really, you know, living up to the general plan, the way it's presented? Which, or do we need to improve, and I think we need to improve.
I agree. I agree, I think too, if we have those committees in place, then it's a good way to kind of keep our.
Hi, Gavin.
How are you doing?
Good.
On the pulse of what's happening, so that when we do kind of these annual reviews, we're able to see, are we coming, are we staying on the target, or are we getting a little bit sidetracked, so.
So what would be the process to, because just human nature, not a lot of people are gonna volunteer. Is, so is there a way that maybe we can reach out to someone and say, hey, will you do this? I don't know, I don't know the best way to get people involved, other than just asking them.
I wonder if the people that have expressed an interest, like in being part of the focus groups, and with this general plan revision, they seem like they wanna be more included, and so maybe that's a place to start.
And, and as we do the living room chat, you know, there's a reach there for people to host those as well. And so we can keep all of those people, like, you know.
That, that participated.
Here's, here's a list of the people that were on the land use focus group.
Right.
I've, and I've written them all down, so we could always go back to them and say, would you be willing to help us in this other area?
Reject them.
Yeah, and.
In another way.
Think in addition to that, maybe posting on the city page, or whatever, just to let people know, we want, we want help with this, but also advertising whenever reviews come in the plan.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, this is something we're wanting to do, and so.
Yeah, so everyone has an opportunity.
Be willing to, willing to donate a little bit of your time, so. Okay, well, I've got you guys, would, would one of you give reverence, and one of you do the pledge?
I'll say the prayer.
Oh, you will?
There you go, I will.
Okay.
All right, I wasn't gonna ask you, because you did it last time, but.
Well, if you want, if someone else wants to, I just, I always seem like I'm like, yeah, no, don't have me do that, but tonight, I need help, and so I'm, I'm just kidding.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
You'll get it, Sheldon, I'll do the pledge.
I'm a prank, I'm a pranker.
Okay. Sheldon said to do the pledge.
All right, all right, so Sheldon's gonna do the pledge. The pledge.
I'll start, isn't it, I?
Then let it go, yeah.
It's easiest, easiest time.
That's right.
If we start acting like we want to do it, then it's gonna be coveted, right, and then everybody else is gonna wanna do it too, so that's why I'm trying to send out positives.
Yeah.
Right. There you go, good for you.
Seer conniving.
Okay, so are there any questions on the, on the minutes? I'm gonna get everybody good effect.
I didn't notice anything.
Okay, I didn't either.
It was pretty, I mean, our last meeting was pretty.
Seventeen twenty-one, we were.
It was like a record for sure.
Twelve. Twelve minutes, right?
No, seventeen twenty-one.
Let's talk it tonight, I'm just kidding.
Okay, so then, just going down the list of things that are on our agenda quickly. Any question, I mean, there's a lot of questions, but maybe we need to go over things, just kind of one at a time.
Okay.
But before we do that, I wanted to just ask, how you guys feel about the success of our focus groups that we've had over, that we had the last couple of weeks?
I felt like, I was really pleased with the response for the one that I helped conduct.
You were on land use, right?
Um, yeah, we had a lot more participation this time, and so that was encouraging, and I felt like people.
I count fourteen, including you.
Yeah.
That were there, which is, which is good.
It was good, I think the time change is definitely a good thing on that, to do it a little bit later.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the seven.
I think people have a harder time with those earlier.
And we need to, and we need to let people know that, you know, if they have comments or whatever, there's that website, Hooper, HooperGeneralPlan@gmail.com.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Do we, how's our response been on the second survey so far, do we, have you had a good amount of people, do you know, Shauna?
I don't know.
Not sure, okay, curious, I just didn't know if anybody passed anything on.
She's semi-chick, yeah.
No.
Oh, no!
We're a short one, we're gonna.
No, I think we've just started to get them back, you know what I mean?
I, I've input about twenty, maybe thirty.
That's good.
Um, but you guys have got a big stack, there's another thirty here, so.
There's probably another thirty there.
That's great.
And I don't know, they don't let us know as far as, like, you could reach out to Manny, they'll be able to generate, like, the online submissions like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, those are just the paper submissions that we got.
Okay.
So.
Awesome.
Um, on the transportation focus group, there was one, two, three, four, five, six, seven people attending that one.
Were you on that one, Sheldon?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
How did that go, just out of curiosity, what was their biggest want?
Um, the safety concerns were like turn lanes and bike lanes, flashing stop, stop signs and walking paths, you know, so safety.
Yeah.
Um, one guy said, they would really like to see center lines in the roads.
That's funny, that came up in my group too, as something that was actually an appeal in Hooper, that there is no center line, you drive wherever you want, unless a car's coming the other way.
Yeah.
Just driving, it's fair.
Right.
That, that is a funny thing about Hooper, is it's like, kind of all over the place, like, some people like hate to curb together, and people are like, why don't we have curb together and sidewalks and, yeah, it's not a popular place.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think one of my, you know, me personally, is, you know, inside subdivisions, it's sixty feet, right? But you go out onto these like main roads, and like I can barely pass another truck in my road, without going off asphalt.
Yeah, and then you add cyclists going up and down there, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so, I wish there was a little more uniformity to, to those, what should be main roads.
To our collector road.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, well, and another thing that was brought up in the focus group tran- transportation, was, um. Uh, they, they said, build trails rather than sidewalks, so it could be multi-use. Make them like tenth of wide, and half of it paved, and half of it gravelled, so you've got bike lane, pedestrian, and horse.
Hmm.
You know, if we're gonna obtain a right of way, obtain a wide enough right of way, that it would accommodate both. And I thought, well, that really makes sense. I don't, you know.
That's a good concept, I wonder if others, there's another city, but then again, the big thing is, how do you maintain it? That's what these guys are saying, like, how do we maintain that?
Yeah.
Stick it, stick our roots.
Yeah. The trailer courses are.
Well, it's like, you know, our horse, our, our pathways that we have now are all paved, and the horses kind of walk along the sidewalk then.
Right. Dibbison and breaking down.
Right.
Paved. But the horses kind of walk along the sidewalk then.
That's true.
But they're saying, rather than a five-foot wide concrete sidewalk, expand it a little bit to allow for both.
Yeah, well, and you can't, if you run, you don't run on a sidewalk, that's really hard on your joints, you need, you need a pavement.
Yeah.
Is that why crazy people run, like?
I, when I used to run a lot, right down the middle of the road.
Asphalt. Absolutely.
Now I know, I shouldn't be so, just, no, I know now.
Concrete is the worst, you know.
I drive, I drive at work in the morning, and it's like, I'm pretty sure it's true.
But asphalt is, asphalt is a lot more.
Right in the middle of the road.
Yep.
There's a sidewalk on.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it seems hard on your joints.
Now, I know.
Now, I know.
Now, you know, as, as people who, who are runners, or are runners.
Fair enough.
I used to be a runner.
I was a runner.
Stopped running, I decided when I was sixty-five, that running was probably a thing I used to do.
Okay. Okay.
Biking now.
And now I bike. So, on the commercial, Bryce, that you were there, um.
Yeah, we have, what do we have, ten, twelve?
I've got nine written down.
Nine, okay, that's, right, all right.
But then.
There was some pretty good discussion, um, I think there's a big fear of, you know, it being some epic commu- commercial community, but it's, that's just not gonna happen.
Right.
Um, we don't have the.
Well, the funny thing is, in the land use, somebody commented, like, well, why hasn't this happened yet, like, capitalism, right?
Yeah.
You can't pour somebody to bring them.
So he's not gonna put some business down here, if they don't feel like it's gonna be profitable.
Right. That's true, so I think a lot of the commercial, I'm glad there was a major commercial property owner on there, and he kind of indicated that, you know, because we asked him, what was his intentions, and he really said, but, you know, a credit union, a, a small, uh.
Coffee shop?
Yeah, a coffee shop, internet.
A coffee shop, it's like an internet, so an internet cafe kind of thing.
Yeah. So that was.
Could be used as a work spot, kind of thing.
Right.
Um, yeah, credit union.
Little ice cream shop, something like that, very nice.
True.
Farmers market, and a holiday market, talked about that, seasonal holiday markets.
Yeah. Farm, yeah, farmer's market, is that, is that what you just said?
Yeah. I did say farmer's market, and, and a seasonal holiday market, um, kind of creating a heart of Hooper.
Okay, sorry, okay. Right, so I think the commercial is just.
Those are the notes that I wrote, yeah.
That's gonna happen, should happen, should really just benefit the citizens here, because I don't see it, someone brought up a Chick-fil-A, but I just don't see that happening.
Actually looked that up last night, and like, what would it cost me to bring a Chick-fil-A franchise down there?
How much?
Well, it's ten thousand dollars to initially get into it, but then, you know, there's a lot of work involved, I, I personally wouldn't do it, but if somebody, anybody wants to, I would frequent it, so.
Sure. But the important thing to remember is that would be owned by probably someone in the community, it's not like Chick-fil-A doesn't own its franchise.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Right.
Most likely somebody local.
Yeah, it is a franchise.
Give more opportunities to kids in high school, or, you know, not so much, sure, so I would say it's a bad.
Yeah.
And then the first.
But the point that somebody brought up was that, you know, the planning season, that people can, to go for, to go to the, some of all time, to go duck hunting, or whatever.
All the time.
Yeah.
And it, and it is seasonal, but.
And they got it back up in Detroit, to go have lunch together, have to go, so they must capture some of that.
Right. That's a very, very valid point.
Sure. Absolutely.
To have a little cafe, I think a cafe, or a fast food place would probably do all right, not that I'd want.
I expect shooting. I expect shooting, but it's like every Saturday, and afterwards, we go to like the nearest subway, you know.
Yeah.
Right.
So, we may go shooting down here, but if we did, then we would have to go up to, have to pass through, yeah, to the city, to the.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, well, we've got West Point and West Haven, and, you know, I think that there's enough kids that go to school together, in these areas, that would probably come hang out at a little ice cream shop, or a little mom and pop type thing.
Right.
Mm-hmm, if I had a cafe where they could go in and sit down.
Mm-hmm.
And make it a.
When we can go in and sit down.
Well, and you remember, I mean, at the Hooper Country Store, you see, like, all the older guys would go back there and visit in the mornings, and.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Think if there's something like, like you said, a destination point, like, it's well-known, because, you know, I'll drive to Brimsey to go to Maddox's.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That's, that's not in my, that's not convenient, but I will, because I like it.
But you like their feed, yeah.
Yeah, so something like that, and I know there's somebody that's talked about that, I don't know how far along he is, but, um, so that would be a good thing.
Yeah, me too.
The water is compliments of brass.
Is it?
Mm.
That was so nice, really?
Well, I didn't wanna.
I didn't know you were capable.
Self-serving, I brought me one, I'm like, I better grab three more.
I'm glad you did.
Grab one for yourself, and if I have a second thought, yes, I'll bring the others.
I was so dry.
I have some Tic Tacs too, so.
I made a copy.
So then, so then, on the focus group, the number one one was Parks and Trails.
Okay.
Um, and they pointed out, you know, if it involves tab, that's on our homepage, you can click on that, and then it brings up all of those maps that are here, and we, we really need to get our citizenry somehow, or through social media or something, aware that these maps are here, they're only gonna be here till about the twentieth of April, fifteenth of twentieth of April. I don't think it says it on that.
Oh, maybe it's in the newsletter.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've gotta do something to get the word out.
And we, and we need people to come in, look at them, be aware of them, give us some comments, there's one comment card in, in that jar.
Road.
And so, you know, just, I was trying to set an example.
Sure.
So, but, the Parks and Trails, um, some of the things that I picked up on were.
Kind of, kind of prime, oh, you don't drive, you're.
Yeah, that's right. Um, improve the bike and, and walking space along road sides, so basically incorporate a bike lane.
But isn't, is that fifty-five hundred south, state road?
It is.
It is. Fifty-five hundred south, and fifty-nine hundred west, plus state park, so we have to work through UDOT to get those, the bike lane there, but the other places, you know, like down forty.
Down this, which is the main two.
Yeah.
It's definitely a hundred dollar.
Yeah, but down, you know, like down to forty-six hundred south, or fifty-one hundred.
Opposite process, is that just like a request?
I'm not sure what the process is, but I think, I think.
Whatever, I mean, that's, that's.
Yeah, somebody's, you know.
I can find it, my neighbor works for UDOT over. Because, something that somebody pointed out too, is there's like a break in the sidewalks, like for kids walking to school, over the tree, there's a spot there, no sidewalk there.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So your next step would be widening with proper, you know, bike lane sidewalk.
Right. Down fifty-five, mm-hmm.
To make that a good to a safety, especially if you're on a, a commercial, and how, a business comes in, it's for the safety process.
Right, well, that's, I know that was one of the concerns we talked about a little bit in the land use focus group, just, I think people, at least some of the people, like the idea of having that be a main street area there, but the fact that the elementary school is, and it is further west, but you, when you, when parents come to pick them up, I mean, they line up all along that road.
Mm-hmm.
To turn in there, and it just seems like there would be certain times of day, that that could potentially be a problem, or maybe if we had a business, right, and used to that, all along there.
Yes, because.
Yeah, but I mean, there's plenty of other places that have a.
We should have to do it, smart.
I don't, I would say that is a definitive thing to not have like a whole street, because.
No, I don't think so either, I just think we have, I think that, that's sort of the concern, is, yeah, just seems like safety is something that's coming up a lot, and the groups and their responses and stuff, so, I think if we, if we can kind of put people's mind at ease, that there's a way to do this, and do it responsibly, so that our kids are safe, and that there's not a, I don't know, I don't like that intersection there, the way it is with the inquiry right now, just because you've got both of those exits coming out of somewhere, and if like, you're heading north, and trying to come off of fifty-five hundred, and make a left-hand turn, it's kind of confusing, there's a lot you gotta watch, and at certain times of day, there's a lot of traffic lining up in that fifty-five hundred, so, I just, I don't know, maybe we're, I have no idea, I don't know what would solve that. See, I was not a big fan at first, but I kind of liked it a little bit more.
If they don't landscape them too high.
There's a couple, a couple of nice ones over in Clinton that I agree.
I don't really like the double roundabouts, they confuse me.
Those are, but, like I drive, go backwards, I live in where I work, and I go through, you know, West Point. Well, I heard that, I, they can, up in Syracuse, they have.
It helps.
And that would be, that would be a good, um, location for a roundabout, even have fifty-five, fifty at the intersection.
We just need to have a community class on how to use them, so people are, that's the only bad part about ring and buttons, is people don't understand, so.
So the other one thing that people brought up on Parks and Trails is, they thought, what about having like, public art along the parkways, like sculptures, or even.
Monuments to, or something like that.
Yeah, or whatever, and like, and things that would change off periodically, so like, we've got a local artist who wants to display their work.
Sure.
The hood for six to eight months, and then we'd switch it out with something else, you know?
That's a heavy.
And then, that's just the artsy fartsy part of things, but.
Yeah, that would, that would be a great.
This is not responsible for damage to it, restoring it, or that's wrong.
Right, yeah.
That'd be a great, uh, committee to have.
That's a good point. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Would be.
I agree, definitely a great committee.
They'd be a feat to have it, put it in, put it back down, in terms of, in terms of manpower for that.
Yeah. It's a good point.
Well, the artist himself would be responsible for installing.
I mean, depending where it is, and the access to the trail, right?
Right.
Usually it's not, it's a lot of the city to.
Just, I just thought that was a very interesting, uh, observation and concept that somebody had brought up, so.
I like the idea, if you just hope that people will behave and respect it, and not vandalize it, and I mean, unfortunately, we've had some things wrong over the park, and went over there for a birthday party, for all of the kids, and I, I, when I saw the tables, some of the pictures, and things, like, somebody's gone over and vandalized, and so we had to move to a different location.
Oh, the thing to.
To ruin it for.
On the table, on the table?
Yeah, on the tables, it was several months ago, I think they fixed it now, but it was, you know.
Okay. Conditionings permit, if God's got any issues with people wanting these.
I have a couple of questions, just because, you know, there's these items that they're supposed, the applicant's supposed to address on the back of the application, those were not included on either of these applications that I saw, so I, I'd like to ask about that, and just see, I, I just feel better if we make sure that they're addressed, so that if there were a problem down the road, we know.
Which one was it?
Well.
It's both on Tony Miller and Jay Jones.
So, like, here, it says, please address.
Oh, I see, I got you.
Tell these all.
We usually have a page in there that addresses those, and I didn't see that in either of those two, so.
So, if we.
Since that was crossed out, why?
I noticed that too, but I don't know why, I don't know if they were saying, yes, there's a problem.
I think those crossed out are circled.
Circled, maybe that they.
I'm not sure, so, and I have made a note as well, just to ask about those, those items, and, and since things are being recorded, we'll have a verbal response, which I think is, is as binding as written, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, conditionals permit, okay, and then we have the request for rezone on Ryan Fisher's property.
I have a copy, just so I can give you guys on that, just showing when the, the property that he references in his application was rezoned. It was for each of them, just in case, because it was not, it was twenty nineteen.
So that was, yeah, he makes reference to the.
Oh, I got one too.
Amanda took care of the song, okay, Mike.
Well, Bryce provided the water, it was the least I could do.
Just took you more time, though.
It did take me a little bit more time.
But the intent was the same.
Yes, yes.
So that's when that was done, and that was approved.
I also.
So then we have, I, I did bring a copy of the resolution.
Okay, that's good.
That we. Did you bring?
I did, I did.
So we may need to refer to that resolution in our decision-making process.
Okay.
Okay, and then, anything else?
Steve Austin, so the, the interesting thing is, I better pass there, because this was resumed since, since. It's still about the team, isn't it?
Right. Well, and.
There's no frontage.
And, and Mr. Ma.
Is that why they're giving this to combine with your conference, or something?
Well, that, that's, I think, Mr. Fisher's argument, is that in the future, if they want to coordinate more together, they would, I, I remember distinctly when Mr. Ma came, and they requested this rezon, he says, I have no intention of building or developing this, I just want to get over this rezone hurdle now, so that in the future, when our kids have their property, they don't have to, they don't have to overcome a certain.
And I do have the minutes from that meeting that I was brought.
Okay, and I.
One thing that I thought was, like, this Ryan Fisher, who missed that, because on, you know, county records, it says.
He just.
He just barely bought it, so I don't think it's been updated on the county yet.
Yeah, yeah, um, what's her name?
Cotton?
I know.
Lila, oh.
Lila, Lila, Lila died a long time ago, and Lila, she just died about a year ago.
Oh, really?
Maybe two, maybe two.
So like your kids inherited it, and you sold it to that person?
Mm-hmm, yeah, it was, it was sold after her death.
So they sold it to you, and he.[1639.62]
They, they sold it to Ryan Fisher.
And he has a rezon.
I don't want to jump the gun, but I know where it starts. And so I also, just because it was referenced, this is a copy of the preliminary plat for the Widdison subdivision, so that you can compare it with what they currently. I didn't see a change, I, I mean, it looked like they had the same amount of lots, but double check me, please, I don't know.
I talked to Rebecca Buck about this, because I called her and I said, what is your concern? She wrote a letter regarding it. And she said that Laurel Widdison's property basically stopped right here when they were giving the preliminary plat. Or the first notification letter, that her, her property only went about this far.
Yes, that's my look.
And then this Wendy Widdison thing, sold or. So this is, this is what Rebecca Buck was talking about, was that her, that Laurel's property ended here at this fence line. So I want to find out and clarify, was that in fact the case? And because if that's the case, we only rezoned this part, and not, and not this piece here. But what Rebecca Buck is saying, she was never notified, or never made aware of an intent to rezone this piece. So I don't know, I don't remember the rezoning, if it was, if it was in fact to this or if this fence line was just a fence.
Well, this is what we're going to do, we'll just fill up these structures here.
So thank you for finding that.
Yeah, I would love to, well, Sean, I'll tell you that, I, you know, it's like, do you have a copy of that?
That was, that was terrific. Thank you for digging on. Any questions on the Christianson Fairway? I went, read through all of that, I thought everything, other than I had a question right here about the updated tie, the such and such, if this was the title. And I just wondered how was this resolved, I was just, just clarifying.
Yeah, so just, just adding this up from this point all the way down with the fudge, just these, the roads, the two of that. They have six sixty-one where the initial initial six forty-nine, so it's to be.
Do you write the concept right from here to there, two feet?
Oh, it's a lot more than that. We can't read that, but that's a hundred-foot footage.
Yeah, so it must, it's, it's basically to within large, I think this is six two, this is forty-nine, it's like twelve feet.
Twelve feet.
So.
Well. Oh, that box in the next door. All right, are you guys ready to go? We'd like to welcome you out to our planning commission. Is this working? Shauna, do I have to eat this thing? Okay, I'm in. We want to welcome you to planning commission meeting tonight. It is seven o'clock and so we want to start on time. Um, we appreciate all the attendance that we have here and we hope everyone feels welcome. Um, we'll open our meeting with a reverence and a pledge of allegiance. Um, Commissioner Prince has offered to give our reverence and Commissioner Greener is going to lead us in the pledge of, pledge of allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven, we come before thee with gratitude for all the many blessings that thou has given us. We are thankful to be able to meet together tonight to discuss the needs of our city. We're grateful for the leadership that we have and we're grateful for the opportunity to serve. We thank thee for all of those who have taken time to participate in this meeting and we ask that thou would please help us to be in tune with the things that are shared. Please help us to be able to listen sincerely and to make decisions that are founded in wisdom and in truth. We ask that thou would please help us to be aware of others in our midst that are in need of special blessings and ask that thou would please help us to know how best we can help them. We ask that thy spirit will be with us throughout this night and we ask that thou would please bless our country, please bless the leaders of our country and help them to make good decisions. And we say these things loudly in the name of thy beloved Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. How's that? Better? I'm trying. Um, first item on our agenda tonight is to review the general plan work session minutes, which were held March ninth. Have the commissioners had a chance to read over those minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
And do you see any need for any changes?
No.
No.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll motion that we approve the general plan work session minutes on March nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
March ninth.
March ninth.
March ninth, I'm sorry.
Okay, and.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, and the second item on the agenda is the planning commission meeting minutes from March eleventh. Um, again, have you had a chance to review those, commissioners?
Yes.
And do you find anything that needs to be changed or amended?
No.
Okay, so seeing no need to change anything, um, let's have a motion to approve those.
I'll motion that we approve the planning commission meeting minutes from March eleventh, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Prince. Do we have a second?
Aye.
And a second from Commissioner Greener. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, this is a, um, public hearing. The first item on our city business tonight is a conditional use permit request for an oversight structure for Jay Jones on his property located at fifty-nine eighty-three West, forty-six hundred South. Is there a representative for Mr., for this? Would you like to step forward? Give us your name and address, please.
Yes, it's Jay Jones and I'm at, it's new address to be forty-nine, or fifty-nine eighty-three West, forty-six hundred South.
Thank you. Um, commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Jones regarding his application?
I have just a couple. Um, on here, there's a spot where they ask you to address the issues, um, traffic problems, fencing, business operation, safety issues, pollution, use of structure, noise, odors, easements, parking and design, and I didn't see where those had been addressed. Are there any issues with any of those items?
Um, no, I think not. We would like to, uh, kind of tuck it back in the corner, if we can, I don't think there's going to be noisy, is it? Hopefully, it won't be smelling. What were the other options?
So it just, it mentions traffic problems, fencing, business operation, safety issues, pollution, use of structure, noise, odors, easements, parking or design. If there's any issues with any of those.
No, I think not.
Okay.
Okay, you say on your application, Jay, that, um, you're going to use it just to keep your cars and trucks out of the weather?
Yeah.
Or are you planning on putting in a concrete floor in it?
Yes.
Okay. You also stated that there'll be no plumbing and no electricity at this time.
I'd like to stub in the electricity because somewhere down the road, I'm going to have a garage door opener and things like that, lights.
Uh-huh.
It'll just be my toy box to work on my old truck and stand by my lights.
Yeah. I can imagine you not wanting to have power out there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that would be hard.
Right now, it's just not the budget, but I know come, probably next spring, we'll come knock on your door again and ask for that.
So just know that if you do build the structure without any power, then when you want to install power, you need to come back, get a building, another permit for that.
That's fine.
Okay? Um, not going to be used for a business.
I think not. I'm, uh, trying to be retired.
Trying to retire, okay. Commissioners, do you have any other questions for Mr. Jones?
I don't, everything looks good to me.
No.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Um, this is a public hearing. Is anyone here that would like to make a public comment regarding this application for Mr. Jones's oversight structure? Seeing none, then we'll close the public comment. Commissioners, any other discussion that you have on this?
No.
Okay. If not, then we would entertain a motion.
I'll motion that we approve the additional use permit for an oversight structure for Jay Jones at fifty-nine eighty-three West, forty-six hundred South.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the conditional use permit for, uh, Mr. Jones. Do we have a second?
A second.
And Mr. Greener has seconded that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. The most, that conditional use permit has been approved. All right. Our next item on our agenda is also a conditional use permit for an oversight structure for, um, uh, one thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight square foot building for Tanya Miller. Is there a representative here?
I'm Tanya Miller, Miller at fifty-six seventy-six West, fifty-seven twenty South.
Okay. Um, commissioners, do you have questions for Ms. Miller?
Just the same questions that I had for the previous applicant. Um, I didn't notice where those have been addressed. I did notice that you had circled easements or crossed it out on here, so I wasn't sure if there was an issue with that or any of those other items. And I can read those again if you need me to.
We talked about pushing the easements back or encroaching on them, but, um, our property line goes back a little bit further than what we were originally told. So we're not going to be doing any of the encroachments or anything with the easements.
Okay, were there any issues on any of the other items that I had read before?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So are you saying that there's, um, a question between you and the neighbor regarding your property line?
Oh, no, we were just trying to push it back further.
Uh-huh.
So the property line is behind our fence, so, no, it was, that was built up there.
Okay.
So are you saying that you decided to move the shop further forward to avoid issues? Is that what you're saying?
No, um, for our property line, there's a canal and we're actually on the other side of the canal. So we're seven feet on the other side and we needed to be ten feet, so we just didn't want to come off, um, our fence line, um, four feet, so. That's ten feet altogether, does that make sense?
So your property's on the other side of the ditch?
Yeah, they didn't, when they first built the subdivision, they didn't want to put the, they didn't want the canal running through the fence of any of the houses.
So your, your property is further back in the south of those.
Yes, yeah.
A train's here.
Watch out for the train. Any other questions? Okay, we'll use him as an example. Will everyone else please silent? They're electronic devices. Thank you. Do we have any other questions for Tanya at this time?
Do you have electricities? So I'm sure you obtained a permit for that, the electricity?
Yeah, we'll need to get a permit for that. Anything else for Tanya? Okay, thank you, appreciate your input. Um, is there anyone here that would like to make a public comment regarding her request for a conditional use permit? Or online? Okay, seeing none, then we'll close the public comment. I, any com, any discussion here on this? Then we can entertain a motion on the request for the conditional use permit.
I'll propose that we approve the conditional use permit oversight structure for Tanya Miller at fifty-six, seventy-six West, fifty-seven twenty-five South.
Okay, we have a, a motion to approve this conditional use permit from Commissioner Greener.
I'll second.
And we have a second from Commissioner Prince. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. That's been approved. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for a request for a rezone from, uh, Ryan Fisher at approximately forty-nine sixty-five South, sixty-three hundred West. This rezone is requesting from an R one to an R two and it is eight point three nine acres. Is there a representative here for Mr. Fisher?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yes, I am, sorry I'm not in town, so I'm attending virtually.
Okay. So you'll need to state your name and address, even though you're virtual.
Okay, so my name is Ryan Fisher. My address is fifty-two sixty-one South, sixty-two fifty West, this number.
Okay. I believe at this point in time, Ryan, we're going to have a presentation from Jared Hancock, our Public Works Director.
Yeah, very good.
Okay, so what you're seeing here is a highlighted in red, the property that's being considered. It's kind of set out facing there by sixty-three hundred. This is the, uh, land use map, generalized future land use map, and you can see the arrow there indicating where the property is, uh, on that map. This is the current zoning, uh, it's currently zoned to R one, which is low density residential. And this is kind of a blown-up version of that, um, the generalized future land map shows it has medium density. And then what they're requesting as the R two zone to request it to become R two and it's currently R one. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, we appreciate you, uh, helping us understand that information. Commissioners, do you have questions for Mr. Fisher?
Ryan, we, we wish you were here in person. Can you hear me?
He's muted.
Are you muted? Oh, he's muted. You have to unmute yourself, Ryan.
Sorry about that. Yes, I can hear you and I apologize. I wish I were there as well.
No, that's fine, no, no worries, we can still conduct this, this way. What's, what's your, why do you want to zone R two?
So, um, originally in the, uh, master plan, the zone for future use says R two. Uh, also the landlord directly to the south of me, um, has, he was, he received the R two zoning, I believe it was just about a year ago, in twenty twenty. Uh, and just to have the ability to, um, if it needs be, to do some acre lots in there. Uh, this is actually some property that I'd like to someday build on myself and, uh, just have a little bit, little bit of space back there. So that's, that's kind of what I'm looking for, is to be able to do that, uh, with the cost of land right now, to be very honest. I, I can't afford to, to buy the whole thing and just sit on it, and so that's, that's kind of the reason for the request.
What's, what would be your timeframe?
Um, honestly, um, I, I'd probably like to get started sometime next year, if possible, uh, for, for building something up for myself. But, you know, not so much of that, I just kind of have to wait and see what happens. Kind of intended it, but I don't have a, a firm plan yet.
As I looked at that piece, um, you're completely surrounded by one-acre lots and that's kind of the feel of that particular area of Hooper. Um, I, I totally understand your, your reasoning, um, but maybe I'll just throw out some, a couple other ideas. For, you know, I've known you, Ryan, for a long, long time, as well as some of the other people here on the commission. In fact, when I coached your son in baseball, I still, uh, used that little, uh, incident we had as a teaching example, I think one of the most greatest things. If I had time now, I'd tell it to everybody, but, but, uh, but you know what I'm talking about.
I remember that about that.
Yeah, those great times. Um, we're kind of in a little bit of a, uh, tough situation here, you know, we've, uh, we have the resolution that while we're having the general plan open, that we were not going to do any rezoning. Um, there's been people prior to you that have, you know, requested rezones that we have, you know, basically told to wait. Um, I'd like to give you a little bit of a challenge and just, just two, two examples. In my immediate neighborhood, um, one of the subdivisions is fairly new and of course, where I live is fairly old. Uh, both homes were on one-acre lots. The one right across from me sold and they had sixty people come and view that in a four-hour period of time and they sold it that day. The other one around the corner, uh, it's a development Dave Rossin did, all one-acre lots, a little cul-de-sac. It's the smallest house in the subdivision and it sold for over seven hundred thousand. And it's not a huge house, it's a nice house. I guess my, my thing is, is, um, acre lots, there's a demand for them. People want them. Um, I think we kind of get caught up in this half-acre lot, I want to maximize my investment and things, but I think you can do just as well and not, and maybe even better by marketing something that's very unique. Uh, but there, you know, we're, we're in a little bit of a tight spot here where, you know, if we show favoritism to you, what about the other people that we've, you know, told them all to? So it's not personal, but I think Hooper, you know, majority of the people like to maintain that rural feel and I think you have an opportunity to maybe be a trailblazer and, and do something different and go against the status quo and, and have a unique product. That's just, you know, a suggestion I thought of that, I, you know, I think you're up for the challenge and, you know, you might want to explore that. But that's kind of my feeling right now. I don't know what the other commissioners think or want to add to that.
I'll, I'll say a couple of things. Um, Ryan, you know, I think very highly of you. This is Commissioner Prince. Um, I know you're a very principled person. I have a lot of respect for you and so I hope you can understand, um, where I'm coming from on this. We did, uh, approve the planning commission, the city council. We're in support of this resolution that we've put in place. And, uh, I don't know, I, I'm assuming you've seen a copy of that resolution and the reasons for it. I know that, um, our general plan currently allows for us to review things at a static point in time so that we can, we can come up with something that's going to be in the best interest of our community. And, um, you had mentioned in your application, uh, there was a couple of themes I just wanted to address. Um, as far as the, the zoning change that happened, uh, with the Ma property, that was actually in two thousand nineteen, uh, September twelfth, I think, was the date that that happened. The majority of the current planning commission was not serving at that time, so I can't comment really, um, on the reasoning for that rezon. But, um, I did drive through that area, and it looks like most of the area is comprised of acre lots or larger. The R-two overlay that's on there, um, is an overlay, and those are things that we're currently looking at right now, uh, with this review of the general plan. Uh, we've sent out some surveys, and we've asked for some community input. And I know that you had mentioned in here, uh, as part of the recent survey, that over eighty percent of Hooper would like it to be a place where their children can build and live. Um, I'm not sure if it mentioned building in there, but it, I know it did say that, you know, there was a percentage of the residents that would like to have their children be able to live in Hooper. Um, I'd like to just also reference the survey, some other numbers on there that will kind of hopefully help you see where we're coming from. Seventy-nine point eight six percent of the responses that we received on the survey agree or strongly agree that Hooper should encourage single-family homes on larger lots. So that's a subjective, uh, theme. What, what do we consider larger lots? We have a second survey that just came out that we're asking that question. We kind of want to see what, what people feel the lot size in Hooper should be comprised of mainly. And so that's something that we're waiting to, to get back, and it may be that this type of a development will fit nicely with what Hooper wants. But the truth of it is, we just, we don't know exactly yet. And I feel like it, it wouldn't be fair to the citizens or to the other developers that have wanted to move forward with their developments if we push something like this through right now. Another thing from the survey, seventy-six point nine seven percent would say that the rate of growth in Hooper City over the past five years is fast or too fast. We've got a lot of developments that have already been approved and a lot of rezones that have already happened, and so that's one of the reasons that we're taking this pause, to be able to kind of assess and make sure that we're on target for where we want our city to be. Overall, I think the commission and the city council have a sincere desire to listen to the input and the feedback that we're getting from the citizens of Hooper, and to come up with a general plan that at least the majority of people can be happy with, and they can feel like they've been listened to. And so for that reason, um, at, at this time, I, I, I don't feel that I would be in favor of approving this. Um, but I'm, I'd like to hear anything, you know, if you have any comments on any of the things that I brought up, I'd sure be happy to hear those.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. So I, I think, uh, the two that have spoken and myself are probably, uh, have very similar opinions about what we want Hooper to be. And, you know, I'm, I'm very appreciative of the service that all commissioners are giving, because I, I know it's, uh, you can't pay people enough sometimes to give public service. Here's just a couple of thoughts that I have. First of all, I have a strong interest, a vested interest in how Hooper turns out. I apply on state in Hooper. I'd like my children to be able to someday live in Hooper as, as, you know, as they get older and, and have families of their own. I don't think that's much of a reality right now, because, uh, they're just not fun. There's not an availability of lots. The only reason that I ended up purchasing this eight acres is because I've been looking for a year solid to try to find a, you know, something that I, that I thought might, you know, give me an opportunity to build down the road in a different location. Haven't been able to find anything, and so that's part of the reason this, this potent kind of got started for me, and wanted to kind of capitalize on this opportunity. So I, I understand wanting you wanting to be cautious with what people do here, because I also have that same interest. I think it's worth noting that I've lived, I lived for eighteen years on an acre lot in Hooper, before I lived on my current half-acre lot. And I sincerely believe that the answer to what people want to, to see Hooper become is not in one-acre lots solely. In other words, I think one-acre lot opportunities should continue to happen, but I don't think that's the answer. If you just put in one-acre lot subdivisions everywhere, uh, in my opinion, that just, that, that would be fifty percent of the people who don't realize how big an acre is and what it takes to maintain and care for an acre lot. I learned that kind of the hard way, that after moving onto an acre lot. And I think if you drive around and look at, uh, you know, some of the, some of the half-acre subdivisions, I think if they're done well, um, I think that they can look very, very nice, and I think that they add value to the city. And, uh, and by the way, in my opinion, an even more half-acre lot is a very big lot. If you look around, there are so many places in West Haven, just up the road, that are building quarter-acre lots, third-acre lots, townhomes and apartments. And so I, I, I kind of, I think you were right, what you said about, you know, a plot size is subjective, so I think we want to be careful about that. And then maybe to Bryce's comment about, um, you know, doing something different, I actually, I, I think I put that in the paperwork a little bit, that I would like to do something different, to make it a little bit more unique, maybe not quite so cookie cutter, which the way things are done. Uh, is again, again, it's, it's some, it's a place that I'd like to, to build eventually, uh, whatever that is. I don't know yet, as I stated. But anyway, so I, I agree with, I think, the sentiment and what we want to be, but I, and I don't think one-acre lots is the answer. If you drive around, there's a lot of one-acre lots, but I think the value of other lots around it, and also, you know, parts of the city that, that don't look as nice, and, and I want it to be a place where it still has the Hooper feel. I've lived here for almost thirty years. My wife was born and raised in Hooper. Has never lived anywhere else. And so, anyway, those are, those are kind of my comments, and then, but also, again, I, I thought it was a year ago that the, the lab neighbor to my south was approved. It sounds like it was a year and a half ago. Nonetheless, those have been approved for R-two. We do share the same boundary line, and I, and although I know what you've been doing as a commissioner, I follow that closely. I also know that I, I believe, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it says in there, you know, that it doesn't say you're restricting, it's saying that you still have the option to, to rezon to R-two or, or to rezon period. Is that correct? Right, did I read that correctly?
Uh, you did read that correctly.
Okay.
There is a, I've got the resolution here just to reference. In the last paragraph, it does say, "Be it resolved by the city council of Hooper City, that Hooper City's general position is that rezones should be limited during the time it is updating its general plan based on the above issues of concern. Uh, this resolution is not to be interpreted as prohibiting the submission of applications for rezoning, but is intended to give general guidance to the planning commission if such applicants are submitted." So you're correct, um, it does not, with absolute authority, you know, prohibit us from hearing applications, from you making application, or from applications being approved. But at the same time, we, we have to take careful consideration for the concerns that that resolution was, uh, drafted based on. And, um, there's been, we've had a pretty, a pretty good response on these surveys and people being involved. I mean, when you look at the percentage of people that actually go out and vote in elections, it, we've had a, a pretty good turnout on these surveys so far. And like I said, I'm not, I'm not somebody that feels necessarily that we should never allow any half-acre lots or anything like that. I just feel like we have an obligation to let people express what they're, what they're wanting for our city. And not just what people's desires are, but also to take the time to look at the, the wear and tear on our current infr- infrastructure and maybe just kind of slow things down for a minute until we get some of that information back. We've got a lot that's already been slated to go in that hasn't even started yet, and so I think that's part of the concern, and, uh, I, I, I hope that people can be patient with us while we complete this process and give people, give people a chance to, to voice their opinions and to feel like they're heard. One of the things I hear frequently is that, you know, people that serve the city don't listen to us. And, and I just, I, that's not the case, but we don't want to send that message. We want to make sure that people feel like they have a chance to comment and to have their views heard before we make any decisions.
Yeah, I understand. Do you, Jared, can I kind of make just a couple more observations real quick?
Sure. You're welcome.
Okay, so the other thing I, I'm mentioning is, as, I'd ask the commission to consider that this is a very small piece of land. This is not, um, a fifty or sixty home subdivision that we're talking about. It is a very small piece of land. It, it is literally ordering another piece that was approved as R-two, and if, because it was approved, if he was, if he chose to start developing it tomorrow, but he could. And, uh, also, I, I was, I didn't meet with the, uh, the representatives from the city, but the mayor, Jerry was there, and several other people. And as far as the infrastructure, it was made very clear, Jerry confirmed this, but that all of the infrastructure is there, that it was planned for many years ago, and and so it was told to me that as far as, uh, utilities and sewer and power and water, it said, there's, there's nothing to be concerned about there. And that was, that was something that was brought up to me fairly clearly. But also just, uh, again, I think just the size of this piece of land. Uh, it's, it's a small piece of land. It's not a lot. It wouldn't be a lot of homes even if we didn't import with it. And so that, I think that's something to take into consideration. Also, you have, I think you have to look at kind of the demand right now. Uh, I understand you guys wanting to be cautious and careful and be very thorough in what you're doing. But also, I mean, due time right now, the demand is very high, and I think that plays a part in this, and so if you delay too long, I mean, you know, people, these farmers are selling their land at, at the top of the market. And so I think that's something to maybe take into consideration as far as the cost and so forth. So anyway, I, I just wanted to mention those things.
Sure, I just.
Thank you. More questions for Mr. Fisher?
Oh, another question, maybe just a comment. I appreciate your thoughts, Ryan. Who, who's right? I, I don't know who's right or wrong. Is there, I think there's some middle ground. I think my main concern right now, it's maybe not necessarily the rezoning, is even though it's a small piece. You're, you're the, uh, father, and you say if you let your daughter go to the prom when she's fifteen, and then the next daughter, you don't let her go till she's sixteen. There's some favoritism there. I don't want to get caught in that where we feel others know, and we tell you yes. I think that would be unfair, very unfair to them and, and even to you. Anyway, that's my big concern with this. Yeah, the infrastructure probably can sustain that. But with just showing some nepotism, I, I want to be cautious. I want to err on that side.
Any other questions?
Okay.
I just want to hear from Jared on the infrastructure issues. Are there any concerns sewer-wise or anything?
As far, as far as we, uh, discussed in that meeting, there, there isn't, uh, sewer capacity issues for this. Like you said, it is a small piece. Roads, you know that, you had to be determined. Water claimed that they had plenty of capacity there as well.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Fisher? Okay, Ryan, thank you. We appreciate your input. Um, I'm going to open this up for public comment. If there's anyone here in the room or online who would like to, uh, speak up, please step up and give us your name and address, please.
I can go ahead and give the comments that were sent in prior to the meeting first, and then I'll let the public.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this comment is from Dave Taylor. My name is David Taylor. I live directly across the street from Ryan Fisher. Property at forty-nine sixty-five south, sixty-three hundred west. Property that's been requested to be rezoned. I completely oppose the reason and request. I oppose any building on that property. These are the reasons. The property is a dear migration route. Wildlife and water billies that property every year. Allotox relay on the property for food. All the construction will include the water, way less than twenty yards to the west of this project. The new construction will lower local home and property values. With all them homes being built up to nine hundred and four thousand, on the bend, we need no, we have no need for more homes. This will destroy our local, our small local roads, increase traffic, and put our kids at risk for being hit by vehicles on the busy roads. We have no need for R-two nor R-one in this property. Hooper is building on each corner. It needs to stop. The Ryan Fisher project must not be approved. Construction on that site will damage waterways, roads, wildlife habitat, wildlife waters. It makes sixteen hundred west unmovable with the mud, dust, and debris from construction. Hooper needs to solve this. Most every home on this road has two or more acres with it. Don't change that standard for the love of money. Those of us that live near this property were told that one point nine acres was, was for sale where one home was to be built. We have been lied to by Mr. Ryan Fisher and Hooper City. Dave Taylor, forty-nine seventy-two south, sixty-three hundred west.
Thank you. Do you have any other letters to read in? Okay. Anyone else have a public comment?
Yeah, I do. Scott Borstrom. I live forty-eight twenty-four south, sixty-one fifty west, in Hooper. My question is more based around, um, I'm wondering how the one-acre lot idea squares with the city's commitment to, to ha- incorporate strategies to encourage moderate income housing in Hooper. How does that one acre R sol square with what you've committed to do with the state? Because according to this, it says, uh, Hooper City adopts the following strategies to encourage landlords and developers to provide housing for moderate-income families in the city. The city recognizes that because of rural nature of its community, the lack of transportation, moderate income housing may look different from large metropolitan areas. And, and the policies that this council was supposed to incorporate into the city planning is listed here. There's four things. It says, and I, I believe that this report was sent to the state. This, wasn't this sent to the state?
That's correct.
Yeah. So this is what Hooper City was planning on doing to make more affordable housing for people. So going to an acre and opening the general plan to increase the size of lots in Hooper is not in compliance with what Hooper said they were going to do here.
Scott, or Mr. Borstrom? Sorry, I just, if I have a, I, if you wouldn't mind reading the goals that we sent in, or I'm happy to do it. I have them here too.
Yeah, so here's the policy. It says, "The city council and planning commission will consider rezoning to, for, to provide for densities more likely to assure the production of moderate-income housing and diverse housing units within the city, assuming that means smaller lots." I can't imagine it means bigger lots than what's in the general plan. The next thing it says, uh, "The city will create ordinances and regulations that allow for more accessory dwelling units in exist, in existing future residential zones." And then "The city council and planning commission will create and implement zoning incentives to encourage the construction of low to moderate-income units within new developments." Has that happened? Is that, is that where the city is going? Is it going towards the plan that they've put together here? The fourth thing is, "The city will apply for, or partner with, an entity that applies for programs administered by metropolitan metropolitan planning organization or the transportation agency that provides technical assistance in preserving and creating moderate income housing." So again, is, is that in line with what you guys are saying here? I, I, to me, by reading it, I'm thinking this, this plan for the one-acre lots does not give accessibility to our kids.
Okay, the point of, of this request tonight is to rezon from an R-one to an R-two. It has nothing to do with affordable housing.
No?
No.
So you think that.
The point of the request tonight is to do the rezon, which is in conflict with the resolution that we've passed to temporarily. the resolution that we've passed to temporarily withhold changing. We're not saying it can never happen. We're saying it can, it's probably not going to happen at this point in time until our general plan is finalized, which will include affordable housing.
Okay. So you're gonna, you're gonna be creating higher density areas in the general plan when you open up?
If you'll read the general plan, it does say that we will have higher density. We've already met some of those criteria. That report that you're reading, we've submitted to the state.
I, I know.
And they've accepted it. And our policies will incorp, will and do incorporate all of those things we said to the state.
Okay.
The point of the request tonight is asking to, for us to go against the resolution that was passed earlier in 2020, that essentially puts a halt to changing any zonings while we're trying to rewrite our general plan.
So the general plan had half acres allotted to that parcel, right?
There, there was an overlay that said this possibly could be rezoned R two. And what the planning commission is doing is not going any further with what the overlays said. If he wanted to develop it today as R one, it's zoned R one, and he can go forward with that. But to make any zoning changes, our resolution that's in force is telling us that we're holding back. We want to hold back until we can finish our general plan so that we can create a new future general use plan based on surveys within the city and what people want. Do they still want that to have an R two overlay? Maybe, maybe not. But right now, it's an R one, and our resolution says that we need to look very closely to that.
It, it sounds to me like you're backpedaling on what you've committed to the state on...
I, I'd like to address that. I mean, I, I have a copy of this here, and I just, I just, I just would like to read the full part of what was submitted to the state. So you read the strategy, and then it asks, please state the municipality's goal associated with this strategy. So the strategy I'm referencing here, and I don't want to get too far out into the field here, but you mentioned, the city council and planning commission will create and implement zoning incentives to encourage the construction of low to moderate income units in new developments. How is the municipality, what's their strategy? The goal is to create potential opportunities for moderate income housing by offering incentives to developers and landowners that will benefit the community. What specific outcomes are we hoping for moderate income housing would be provided? Landowners and developers would benefit and community as a whole would benefit. Please describe how the municipality has monitored this. So it goes on to talk about, we're looking into things such as TDR, transfer of developmental rights. I don't know if you're familiar with that, and I don't want to get too far into that here. But that, and that's not something that's set in stone, but it's something we're looking into. We're trying to come up with ways that we can preserve what we have and respect what the community wants and also fulfill the requirements from the state. Another thing was the accessory dwelling units. Our ordinances have changed so that we now allow those. They can be attached, they can be detached. People can have a renter live on their property. That before was not allowed, so we've complied with that. We've partnered with Wasatch Front Regional Council. That was another theme that we said that we would do. They're guiding us through this process to help us navigate these things. So we are doing things. We're actively looking at that. As far as affordable housing, whether it's a half acre lot, an acre lot, an apartment, you can look at the ones on four thousand, and if you call and you find out what the rent is, it's not affordable. My mortgage is less than what those homes or those apartment buildings are. The reality is, we, we are having an issue here, and we're trying to be creative so that we can find that balance in respecting what our community has.
I have noticed those things, the things that you're mentioning. I, I have noticed that, and that does help for sure. But there is a, a lack of, of lots available for my kids. They can't live here. So, you know, I think that this problem is same thing with other people living in Hooker as well.
Even with, and I don't want, I don't want to argue with you. I just, with, even if those lots were half acre lots or third acre lots, they still would not fall under what is considered affordable housing. And if you go out, you, you can look on there and the criteria is on there.
Oh, I know. I know.
So it's something that I just think there's two separate issues here, and so...
But going to an acre is not going to be more affordable than a half acre or quarter. So that's all I can say.
But either one just won't fall into that category. That's all I want to point out. But I appreciate your comments, and we are trying.
I'd just like to make a couple comments. You know, you outlined four or five things there. Things take time to develop. You know, just because they're written down doesn't mean they're going to be accomplished in a year or two. It's going to take some time. But there are certain areas in Hooker that half acre or quarter acre lots don't mix. It's not who we are. It's not intended. There's some property that's just not developed for whatever reason. So we gotta be cautious in trying to fit a, a square peg in a round hole. Like Amanda said, I totally agree. Half acre lots, smaller lots do not equate affordable housing. So my question is, who created the problem? You know, that's something to think about. Why are they so much money? Now, we have to deal with it as a community and a council. This problem is not created by us. We're, we're doing our best, and we will, through these accessory dwelling units and, and those things. But you have to really look, why is it so expensive? And who is it handling? It's not us. We're just trying to do our best to accommodate those so kids can live here. But shoot, I, I don't know if I could afford to live in Hooker if I had to move here right now. It's, it probably wouldn't be a possibility. Anyway.
Okay. Any other comments from our commission? Public comments?
That was fifty-six seven south, sixty-three hundred west. I just wanted to address Mr. Fisher's comment about the infrastructure was approved many, many years ago. I mean, many years ago, could be twenty-five years ago, could be thirty years ago, who knows? And who, I'm pretty sure they didn't know back then, you know, how much growth there was going to be at this time. So maybe it would have handled it back then, but I doubt it's a handle it now. And I too agree with the commissioners that the clause, we should honor what we told the citizens, what has been passed. I can tell you that several, I would say more than several, the majority, I watch social media very closely, and the majority of people are just absolutely disgusted and embarrassed about what's going on. But the city, somebody's made the, the comment about the perception that we have the opportunity. We do have the opportunity to speak, but I can tell you the majority again is always saying, yep, we'd come down here and speak, but nobody listens to us. I think it was two months ago, Mayor, two months ago, where something was passed at the city council, and we all stood up and walked out, and we were all just disgusted. But because the, the city always asks, you know, the citizens, what do you want? What do you want? Here's a survey, here's a survey. We tell you, we ask you, we beg you, we plead with you, not you, the city council. And for some weird reason, city, the citizens just aren't listened to. We're just not. And I will tell you that social media, the city is a joke. Don't even bother. Why would we bother to even say anything? Because nobody listens. So the last point I want to make is, it might be a, a small piece of property, eight acres, could, if you let go to a half acre lot, equals to sixteen more houses down there. Could, maybe not. Could, has the potential. So I would just ask the commission to please honor what has been passed already and put a pause on that.
Thank you. Other public comment, please?
Chris Paulson, fifty-eight twenty west, thirty-eight hundred south. So having been on the council that passed the resolution, I just wanted to make sure that the citizens that are in attendance and that are listening understand what that resolution was intended to do based on the council's perception and based on, on my understanding. The resolution, originally the planning commission submitted to the council, a moratorium movement that through state statute could not, couldn't proceed longer than six months, or it would be in conflict with the state code. Because of that, they passed it at nine months. That was in, in conflict with state code. We had to, as a council, come back and revisit that. And per the planning commission's recommendation to us, we decided to do a resolution. In order for a city to prohibit growth or to stop growth in their, their town, there has to be, according to state code, an imminent problem with multiple things. And in the resolution, we go on to state multiple areas where we see there could be a problem with growth. However, the, the therefore clause, which is the action clause put in place by my vote and the others that were there, states that, that the rezon should be limited. Doesn't, limited does not mean not approved. It means approved in a small amount. So what I've heard from the planning commission multiple times this evening is that we're not going to allow anything. That is contrary to the current policy that's set by the city council. So I just want to make sure that the commissioners are taking that into account. We have no authority in the town of Hooker to stop growth. We have to allow citizens to move forward with the property. We can limit it, but we can't stop it. And so I want to make sure that when we're up there representing the city, we're understanding how that resolution was put together, and we're also understanding who ordered on that resolution to approve it. And I just hope the commissioners take that into course. Whether, whether it's for, for Mr. Fisher or whomever else comes before this, this commission, we got to make sure the city's compliant and standing in the right ground. And to, to have everyone that comes up here and we blanket, tell them, you ain't got a chance. It's going to put us in a bad spot. I just want to make that clear.
He has the right to develop right now. Chris?
Am I able to address that at all, or?
If you want to, it's a citizen comment. It's up to you whether you want to address it or take it as a comment.
I, I just want, I just want to make sure that we...
I've talked too much.
I won't. I just want to clarify, and maybe, maybe you can give me the right direction here. But what the planning commission initially put forth was supposed to have been based off of the state code ten-nine-eight-five-oh-nine. And I think there was some confusion in that meeting because some of the council members had cited ten-nine-eight-five-oh-four. Those two things are different. I, I don't believe we ever tried to put forth a moratorium specifically. And, and I'll let you look up the codes if you want. I have them here. But there is a difference between those two things. And I, I read what was exactly in the resolution. I don't think any of us have said we're a hundred percent denying everything. In fact, I think we've approved one. It was a smaller subdivision that wouldn't leave too big of an impact on the city. And so of course, people are still welcome to apply, but I think they need to be aware that this is the mindset, the general mindset of the city right now. Not necessarily every member of the city council, but what we're getting feedback from. And so that's why we're waiting. That doesn't mean that things won't change in the future, but for right now, that's the general mindset. We're trying to save people time, so.
Other public comment, please?
Yes, my name is Gaby Perkins, and my husband Lynn and I own the property just to the north of Mr. Fisher's property. He wants to make one half acre lots. We are completely opposed to it. We moved down there to not have that. If we wanted to have acre lots or smaller little subdivisions, we would have moved to Roy. And that's not what we want. The, the housing unit to the south of us or to the north, north of us is one acre pieces and more. And that's what we would like to have happen. If, you know, we can't, you can't stop progress, but you don't have to have small little subdivisions in the middle of where people invested to build these nice big homes, and then all of a sudden these little homes go in there. So that's how we view it.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Are there any other public comments, either in the room or online? None online? No, we're in the room? Okay, then we'll close the public comment, return it back to our commissioners for discussion. Any, any further discussion on this?
I stand by what I, what my initial comments were as far as, I think we need to respect the spirit of the resolution that we passed. And it's nothing saying it can't be, nothing saying that it can't be developed the way that it is right now. We're just putting a pause on rezones. So we're just saying not to change it into something that it isn't at this point until we have the time to do a comprehensive study.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Prince, any, any others?
Of course, on the rezone, they're making a recommendation and city council, um...
Right.
And they're the one, and Mr. Paulson's right, they're the ones that passed the resolution. They, they'll have the final say.
Okay. Given that and our guidance from our city attorney, we would entertain a motion on this request for a rezone for Mr. Ryan Fisher.
I'll make the motion that, make the recommendation to not rezone Ryan Fisher's property at forty-nine sixty-five south, sixty-three hundred west, eight point three-nine acres from R one to R two.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Wilcox to decline this request. Excuse me. Mr. Richards, are we recommending to city council that it be declined?
Yes, under rezone, yes.
Okay, thank you. So we have that motion from Commissioner Wilcox. Do we have a second?
I will second.
And we have a second from Commissioner Greener. All those in favor of declining or recommending to city council that this be declined?
I...
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So that motion has been declined. It's been recommended to city council. The planning commission has declined it. Okay. The sixth item on our hearing tonight is a final approval for Christensen Fairway subdivision. This is a one lot subdivision of two point two acres, a nice large lot out at the end of fifty-five hundred south. Jared, do you have a presentation for us?
Yes. So here's an overview. There's Google maps showing, the blue's showing the approximate boundary of the lot. Here's the plat showing how it lays out around fifty-five hundred west. And as far as staff, staff review, all the items in the city's staff review memos have now been completed. The final plat and improvement drawings have been updated. The last two remaining items, which was the access easement and additional ride of way dedication were updated directly following the last staff memo. Final will serve letters have been provided by Taylor West Weaver Water Improvement District and the irrigation company. Final approval has been provided by the Weaver Fire Marshal, and other will serve orders have also been provided.
So item one, where you say the last two remaining items, which was the access easement regarding the, the Lenny Woo LLC and Grandma Mack LLC, you say that's been taken care of?
Yes.
And then also the, the one point two-four feet, was that dedicated to roadway?
It was rededicated.
It was rededicated for roadway as well. So those only two, those were the only two items on the memo that needed clarification. And you're saying that those have both been resolved?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a representative here for the Christensen Fairway subdivision?
Thank you. I'm Steve Austin.
Okay.
Address this four oh six north, five thousand west in West Point. So the purpose of the subdivision is to build my personal residence so my kids can grow up next to Grandma and Grandpa and live on the, kind of the family land. So we really appreciate the service you guys do and the time that you spend. You have a difficult job, and we appreciate your time and consideration.
So the house that's showing there on the plat in the corner, that's your parents' home?
So that's Larry Christensen's.
That's Larry, okay. And he's your father?
Yeah, he's our father-in-law.
Father-in-law? Okay. Well, obviously, your name's Austin. Sorry.
No, you're good.
Well, that will be, okay. And I guess we have all of the issues sorted out?
Yeah.
Any questions?
Yeah, we do. We've worked out for quite a while, so.
Okay. Any other comments? Are you part of the, are you part of the group?
I'm part of Jeremy Creek, Rich, Richmond Associates, just here to help answer any additional questions you may have.
Were you the general contractor?
Civil engineer.
Civil engineer, okay. I did have one question, and maybe Jared, you can help us out with it a little bit. It says here, "In lieu of curb and gutter construction at this time," because 5500 West is slated to be vastly improved and widened. So we wouldn't ask you to put in curb and gutter along 5500 right now, but we would escrow for those funds. But it says, "In lieu of curb and gutter construction at this time, the developer will be required to coordinate with public work so that street drainage in front of the lot is adequately addressed." And my question is, when will this coordination take place? Prior to the commencement of any construction? Or at the end, post-construction? Or during the middle of it?
So that may be a question for Jared as well. But I have spoke with Jared and we have coordinated a lot of that. He's mentioned that we would need to escrow that.
Right, well, yeah, we'll need to escrow for curb gutter and sidewalk because of the-
Right.
But we definitely wouldn't want you to build it because of the proposed widening and improvement of 5500.
Right, right. And I think, I mean, as far as placement and kind of coordinating with the road project that's coming, I mean, we're set back enough.
Okay.
So those escrow funds should take care of.
So that coordination for the street drainage of the lot is just going to always kind of be an ongoing thing, I would assume? Is that correct, Jared?
Well, what exists there now is just an open drain ditch. And we really didn't want them to, where we're asking them to contribute their funds for those improvements towards our project. It made sense because we don't want them to put something in that we turn around in a year and rip out.
Right.
So we basically let them get their driveway, their fire hydrant, that stuff installed so that it's functional. And then we'll just use their money to go towards the project and minimize what improvements are actually being done right now.
So the drainage in front of that lot will just be accomplished by putting a pipe in so that, for a crossing, so they have access even out of the lot?
It can still get into the open drain ditch currently.
Okay.
So we can line and pipe it.
Okay, okay. I just didn't know when that coordination was going to take place, and I guess it's-
Some of it already has due to Taylor West Weaver has a water line project there. And they wanted to go ahead and get some of these improvements in with that project. And so they really got most of their utilities already set up, so.
Okay.
Through the West Weaver project, I don't want you to think they moved ahead without permission. They, that was done on behalf of Taylor West Weaver Water.
Okay, all right.
Is this the subject? No, it's sewer. Yeah, so it's-
I see the sewer vacuum line is kind of open on the corner. Is there, you know, if we're rebuilding the house, there's soap and everything will get-
Yeah, so we have an existing sewer line that goes up that road. And that's the location that he's chosen that will work best for his residence. And then he's providing an easement on that. You can see where that arrow points to that just allows that, lets them have that line right there.
So you're giving the side of the lot where actually setting the house back, you know, a couple hundred feet into the lot there. So it's just more convenient and makes more sense to put the sewer from that side.
Awesome, maybe less hassle.
Okay, that'll be a nice lot for you back there.
I guess I might add, that's 2.25 acres, I believe. I can't quite see it on a, could be down a lot smaller than that. So it's a big lot, not smaller than me.
Yeah. All right, any other questions for Mr. Austin?
I just had one question on item number seven. It talks about a resolution is required prior to the planning commission review of this subdivision. Has that resolution already, the city seen that and everything's okay with that, Jared?
I don't have that memo.
So it says the east boundary of Lot 1- Sorry, I'm trying. The east boundary of Lot 1 and the existing fence at parcel 84101 do not appear to coincide. It will be the developer's responsibility to ensure that the plat does not result in a boundary dispute with the property owner to the east. A resolution is required prior to the planning commission review of the subdivision. Has that resolution with the property owner to the east taken place?
Those property lines would have been kind of looked at by Tracy and our survey people. That's not something I dig into personally, but I believe he worked it out. And maybe Jared can address that.
We do have that boundary line agreement worked out with some of the property, so that has been resolved.
Okay. Do we have a copy of that by chance, the city?
I don't have that with me, but I would definitely get that over here.
Is it on record with the city now? Do we have a copy in the city offices?
Yes, it's on the board. Yes.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Steve, we appreciate your input.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to make comment regarding the Christiansen Fairway subdivision?
Good evening. James Richards, our property is at 6035 West, right here on 4600 South. Our backyard, the property adjacent, is that particular piece of property. We bought a home-
Wait, where, I'm sorry.
This is the-
Where's your address?
We're right up here on 4600 South.
Yeah?
6035 West.
I think that that might be the Widdison, is there?
Are you talking-
The Widdison subdivision, maybe?
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Sorry, so this is for the Christiansen subdivision that's on 5500 West.
My backyard, that lot is in my backyard, that property.
Are you talking about right-
6035 West, 4600 South.
So-
So this is on 5500 West. So this is north of 4,000, this subdivision that we're-
I thought this was the item, the Widdison subdivision.
Not yet.
It's next.
Not yet, we'll be there next.
Oh, you're not better yet?
Not quite.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You'll have your turn. Thank you. Okay, regarding Steve Austin's Christiansen Fairway subdivision, are there any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Return it back here to commissioners, do you have any other discussion?
No.
No, I'm just making sure that we have that resolution on file with the city. That's the only thing that-
Okay. Seeing no other discussion, we'll entertain a motion on the request for Steve Austin's final plat review.
Okay, I will make the motion that we give, that we recommend to the city council approval of the Christiansen Fairway subdivision at 3870 South, 5500 West, with the recommendation that they just make sure we have the resolution referenced in item number seven on file with the city.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Prince. Do we have a second on this motion?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay. And we have a second from Commissioner Wilcox. Sorry, I didn't see who it was. All those in favor of approving this request?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Recommend that for approval to city council. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the one that you want to talk about in a minute, okay?
I can hardly hear you guys, and I didn't put my hearing in, so that's my fault.
I can't talk any louder.
Okay.
The next item is the final approval for the Widdison subdivision. 24 lots at a parcel of 6,000 West and 4,700 South. Do we have a presentation, Jared?
Yep, we have. So the property that's up for discussion is highlighted in blue there. As you mentioned, it's kind of tucked off, 4,600 between 5,900 West and 6,100 West. This is the plat for that subdivision. And as far as staff review memos, all of the items in the city staff memos have now been completed. Final plat and improvement drawings have been updated. Final approval letters have been provided by Hooper Water Improvement District, the irrigation company, and Weaver Fire District. All other required will serve letters have also been provided.
Okay, thank you, Jared. Is there a representative here for the H&amp;L subdivision? H&amp;L Widdison subdivision?
My name is Alan Harris, K-A-R-R-I-S. My address is 5419 South, 3275 West, Roydun. And we've been working on this for quite a while. I think we meet all requirements, zoning, et cetera, et cetera. And we just asked if you would give us approval. If you've got any questions, we'd be glad to answer them. Now, of course, we back up the ideas from these, he keeps us out of trouble, so.
Okay, and I didn't catch your name, sir, the last time around?
Yep, Jeremy Draper, REITman Associates with Draper.
I have a question, Alan. On the preliminary plat that was presented, it showed a fence line going down through what you now show to be lots. By the way, I like the way you plotted this out, too. Sorry, takes me a minute to find what I can read. There was a fence line shown on the preliminary plat that went through lots 10, 13, kind of across the back of 16 and 17.
When I purchased this property, I purchased a portion of it from Widdison's and a parcel, three acres, from Mike Flick. That represents the boundary between them two, which I have now bought and own the entire parcel. And I've actually taken that fence down, so you can take your eraser and erase that off of there.
No, it's not on, it's not on the current plat, I was looking at it.
Yeah, because it was just shown there because that was a two parcels, 90-foot, 100-foot.
We've noticed that the fence line, the fence is gone. When... The reason I'm asking this question is we had a public comment saying that they felt like the rezone was only approved for the Laurel-Widdison property and not the Mike Flick.
The parcel that was brought in was for the entire parcel, both properties. The legal description that was brought in and the legal description that was filed with the zoning and the ordinance that was done was the entire property.
And I can see that there on the preliminary plat, it does go over the fence line. So that just is in response to a citizen's concern, so I wanted to address it.
Sure.
Okay? So that's my only question.
Okay.
Is there any other questions? Jared, you're finished with your presentation? You have nothing more, of course?
No.
Do we have commissioners, do you have any more questions from Mr. Harris or Mr. Draper?
It's like they addressed everything that the city requires. It's quite a, quite a handful.
You've been down this road a few times.
I have.
So parcel A is now the retention pond?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Sorry, Jared, I missed it on here, but they got the fire marshal sign off on it. Number of exits, huh?
Yeah, yeah, it's okay for one.
And the two stuck streets are going to come down and do a hammerhead?
Yeah, that's what they're, that's what Jared and the fire, isn't he, you and the fire department have worked out on that, that they like that better than some of the other alternatives we've had.
Yeah, we tried a different alternative of a temporary turnaround and the residents, they didn't like it. And it, so we, as long as we can serve the purpose for the fire district, that's the main need for it.
It was kind of a, I think we experimented with a few things. And this is what the fire department seemed to like the best and the residents that lived with it after.
Well, honestly, I think it's, I like that better than the cutting into the front yards of, for, to make the temporary turnaround. I like the hammerhead design, that's just my overall design.
It limits the lot a little bit, but these are big enough lots that we will not have a problem.
Will there be an HOA involved in this?
No.
Okay. So someone has to police the fact that that hammerhead turnaround does not become a free parking space for somebody's RV. And I'm not sure who's going to do that. Obviously, you or the developer, you'll be gone long gone.
I think it falls under the same thing as if somebody parking in front of a park, I guess. We can't stop somebody from doing it, but we can sure ticket them for that.
Yeah.
So you may want to have a conversation with the sheriff as he sees drive down. Maybe that's something that he has to look at. I think that would fall under that same thing, wouldn't you think, Brandon?
Oh, yeah, I think if anybody, if anybody's, you know, violating state statutes or your city ordinance, we can ticket them and enforce it that way. And we've done that elsewhere in the city.
So, yeah, I think there's a mechanism in place to handle that.
Right. I just note that that design is quite appealing to park your normal marriage.
Sure.
Where, you know, it definitely can't be, it's like parking in a fire pit. But I realize that isn't anything that you have control over.
The easement will be recorded, obviously.
Right. And so that is-
And I will try to do my best. We will build publicly, build most of the homes in it, and we'll do our best to inform people.
Will you be selling any individual lots without a bill job attached?
You know, I don't know at this point in time, and the market is so crazy right now. I mean, I don't even know what the 204 is going to cost me tomorrow.
I understand that. Like I said, I would like to compliment you on the way you laid this out because I like the fact that we've got some bigger lots interspersed by the city blocks.
I'll pass over the rules.
Our civil engineer did a good job. Because it does give variety. And that's what we want to see in our subdivisions is private.
And I think it gives you, if the ground to the south of there ever develops, it gives it a good feel to it, too, while.
Okay.
I just want to say thank you for making sure that you've got all of these things addressed and taken care of. It's just nice to look down and see that there aren't any messes that-
I've been dealing with Jared for a long time, and he's beat me many times for not being sort of-
So, and I'll say this, well, we appreciate it, too.
We know it's a process, we get through, and we pull our hair out sometimes, but we get to the end.
It's just, we appreciate it, so thank you for the work you did.
You bet, thank you. We good? Eric, are we good?
I believe so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope? Okay, this is a public hearing. We have one letter to be read into the records, and then it'll be your turn, okay?
Okay, this one's from Rebecca Bug, 4756 South, 6150 West, Hooper. I received a carpet owner notice with H&amp;L Widdison subdivision going way directly behind my house. I have three areas of serious concern. The land that 10 of the lots sits on was not part of the Laurel-Widdison land. It was not rezoned when Laurel-Widdison land was rezoned. Laurel-Widdison land was up for rezonement. We're not quite with the letter, and Laurel's land was specifically highlighted, and neighboring parcel was not. At the time, so when the Widdison Page land was not rezoned, there are two, I think it was still agricultural. As a carpet owner directly adjacent, I was not in quite of any changes to that property. I recognize that it was part of a big picture plan for the subdivision, but it has not been properly rezoned. I recognize it was part of the big picture, but I was never known by it. I have also checked with the neighbors, they've not been applied. I recognize it had a plan similar to this, it's been through the commission, but they skip rezoning at night specifically. This part of the development needs to be stopped immediately. The original plan we were sent was approved by the planning commission. The city council had a three-inch pond. This space is now, this is parcel A, and it's mapped out just like the other lots. The Thomas Love subdivision has had drainage problems and putting in 24 houses uphill of the existing subdivision with no drainage pond in the neighborhood. There are too many lots, we were told in the beginning that since there wasn't a second exit for the subdivision, it were really a first exit since it dumps into our subdivision, that there would be 24 houses. Please do not allow as many houses to have no option but to raise through our quiet subdivision to get an actual road. This many houses needs to have access to 5,900 Midwest before the entire subdivision is conceded. The next one is from Fran Ames. My understanding from the first meeting was the lots would be one acre. The surrounding community that this land backs up is mostly one acre and has horses and farm, or other farm animals. The lots for the subdivision should be close to an acre in keeping the surrounding community and to keep the rural intent for avoid fossil issues later on, smell, animal noises. I am urging the city to require one acre lots.
Okay, thank you. Other public comment here in the room or online? You don't have any online?
Yes.
I'll be quick.
You go ahead. I'm coming.
I just have a question on the plot map, it doesn't, I'm down losing it, by the way. It doesn't have the hammerhead. I see the circle right there, but on the map itself, those two roads, it doesn't show the hammerhead.
The very bottom.
At the very bottom, between the lots 11 and 12, there's the dotted line that shows the- At the very bottom, between the lots eleven and twelve, there's the dotted line that shows the basis turnaround easement.
Okay, God, thank you.
Okay?
Your turn.
I don't believe it.
It's your turn.
You need my name and everything?
We need your name and address, please, sir.
Jim Richards. You want the address? Sixty-thirty-five West Forty-six hundred South.
Okay.
No, I am adjacent to this picture, so I didn't have my hurry any time. I'm not sure, but evidently this was already approved where the rezoning was done, similar to the item five that was being considered that was denied because of R-one, R-two. So I'm assuming that this has already been approved to R-two zoning.
You're correct. Yes, you're correct. That, this has been rezoned for you, like you had about...
We had just, we bought this...
August of twenty nineteen, and it was rezoned.
Yeah, we purchased our house about three years ago, something in that neighborhood. And we moved out here because of the one acre, because we have two horses. Hooker was a pretty attractive area. So I understood that piece was gonna be sold, but unfortunately, I made it out quite a bit, and I didn't keep up with it. But it looks to me like we have pretty much the same issues. It sounds like you basically approved everything through the prior meetings and submissions of paperwork, so it might be too little, too late. But I think developing that into smaller units is creating a problem that you were foreseeing in item number five, as your rebuttal at this time to re-change from R-one to R-two. Because you wanted to keep the integrity of this hooker in the one acre lots. Well, you turned around, and there's an example of doing just the opposite. The concerns me is I'm pretty progressive in development issues and what's going on in this day and age. I didn't anticipate a high-density subdivision behind me. And I believe just about everything around that particular piece is in the same situation. They're all acre plots. So I know in the past, whether it's Hooker or anyplace else, and you mix that into the middle, there's gonna be issues that come to grips with everybody surrounding that with that development. You're putting a higher number of people in there. I mean, there's the obvious things, and it sounds like you would dress it with the fire department in terms of accesses and this kind of thing. But there's other good neighbor issues that I can't sit here and dictate them because they have to have them. And that's where you start getting problems. So I think, well, it's too late, and you've rezoned it and never reset. I know in other communities and other places, when they put in a higher density population like that, I think one of the best solutions is to put a... I'm trying to think of what the correct word is. You can put a perimeter around the whole subdivision and somewhat encapsulate it so that you're not gonna have any of these visual issues that could arise. It's gonna eliminate that. In other words, you could develop a little community within that area, and it's not gonna intrude on the existing homes, and the other way around. So I guess you've addressed all of the, pretty much all the other technical issues with drainage and everything else. But I think the biggest issue is what I was commending you both to the planning commission, the way you handled item five. And then I'm a little disappointed in what's happening right here. But evidently, that took place probably several years ago. So you laid the groundwork. It's too bad I wasn't here to express that, but...
Well, we appreciate your comments, Mr. Richards.
Okay.
We appreciate you coming in and boasting your opinion. This subdivision was approved, I mean, it had preliminary approval a year and a half ago.
Yeah.
And the developer's been working on the problems and solving those, and now he's come back with a plat map that we can accept, so...
Well, I think, just think about this seriously. Just because you've got all approvals doesn't mean you have to pull the trigger. I think, I would feel most of the neighbors that are surrounding me would have to have some of the same feelings that I do, that me and my wife have. And you're probably given opportunities to address those.
We've had several meetings, and we've had several people come in and give us their opinions one way or the other, and we appreciate yours.
Right.
But at this point in time, I don't believe this train can be halted.
Did it what? You said this train can't be halted. Hard to start moving on. Well, we're, I mean, the cards are dealt, and we'll let things, obviously, the ball's gonna keep rolling, but I guess time will dictate what, unfortunately, so. Consider the perimeter.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other public comment regarding any H.L., H and L Woodison subdivision? Anything online? None, okay. Seeing no other public comment, we will close it. And return it back to our commissioners. Do you have any other questions or any discussion?
That did kinda, a good question I had about the dislike usage. Is there a fence gonna be required along that southern border of this, Jared?
The southern border does, between the ag and the residential, but not for the rest of residential.
So that one does help fence first?
Yeah. Yeah, a lattice separation fence, yes. One other question that was brought up in the, Rebecca Buck, Jared, I'm gonna point this to you. There's one ingress egress in this development, and there's twenty-four lots. That is our limit, isn't it?
I believe the fire marshal's actually a little bit higher than that. I think after thirty, I'd have to...
Thirty lots? Is it thirty lots? Okay, I wasn't clear, and I wanted to clarify that, because one of our citizens was concerned that there was only one ingress egress.
Yeah.
I found that here.
Okay, I'm good. All right. Any other commissioner discussion?
I just wanted to point out that, because I know the concern was raised about the parcel A taking the place of the detention pond, but that's the same. That is the detention pond, that's just what it's been labeled. So just for clarification, so that I know we addressed that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, then, I would entertain a motion on the request for final approval for the Woodison subdivision.
A motion that we give or recommend final approval on the Woodison subdivision, twenty-four lots of six thousand west and forty-seven hundred south.
Recommend that to city council?
Recommend it to city council.
We have a motion from Commissioner Prince. Do we have a second?
Sorry, I've got one more question.
Okay.
From Jared. Number...
I'll say that.
No question mark? Okay. And we have a second, then, from Commissioner Wilcox. All those in favor of recommending approval to the city council for this subdivision, please man a fist. Are there any opposed? This recommendation will go forward to the city council. Okay, the last item on our agenda tonight is the preliminary approval for Eagle Estates subdivision, which is a thirty-four lot development at approximately forty-one hundred south and fifty-nine hundred west. Jared, do you have a presentation for us?
I do. So here's the Google view and approximate boundary, the red line shows of the Eagle Estates subdivision. This is the proposed plat map of Eagle Estates. This is the preliminary plat approval, and it shows how Eagle Estates lays into that overall site plan.
You say that's preliminary approval for...
That's the overall site plan, which shows how it lays into the entire parcel.
Okay, so the total increase that's out there. Thank you.
And then the planner view, comments from staff, the subdivision phasing process has not been followed as described in chapter six of Title X in the city's ordinances. Portions of the lots and utilities are shown beyond the line provided by the developer as the wetland delineation boundary, with no response to staff's inquiry regarding what is actually permitted for construction beyond this line. The Wicker Fire Marshal will not approve the current plan without a second ingress in the egress. He is currently waiting for a response to his phone calls from the developer's engineer regarding this issue. UDOT has not given approval to the proposed intersection located, location onto fifty-nine hundred west as shown on the plat. The vacuum sewer does not work as designed, nor has there been enough detail provided for the pipeline all the way to the connection point in sixty-three hundred west. There are numerous questions and comments regarding the submitted improvement plans that have not been addressed in response from the developer. These comments relate to sewers, storm drain easements, et cetera. The city has received a copy of the letter from the Hooper Irrigation Company to the developer outlining twenty-one comments and/or conditions that must be addressed before they will provide a final will serve letter. This letter does not constitute preliminary approval as required by the city's subdivision ordinances. The city, the letter received by the city from Hooper Water Improvement District dated November of twenty twenty indicates that a full lot location to the district is still required. This letter does not constitute preliminary approval as required by the city's subdivision ordinances.
Okay. We have a representative here.
Before that, would you mind if I just jump in and just kinda go over a little bit of the city ordinance on this?
Thank you.
May I, may I approach? So for a subdivision preliminary plat approval such as this, typically, and this is in our code ten-six-four-point-two, typically, we require everything in the preliminary plat checklist to be submitted to the city prior to one of these types of items landing onto your agenda. So typically, what happens is the developer submits to city staff, so to the city engineer, to city public works, everything that's required in that ordinance that I just specified. If city staff determines that the package is not complete, you typically do not see the item land onto your agenda. The reasoning behind that is probably obvious, but it is so that once the item lands onto your agenda, you can focus specifically on other things, layout, do you like the design, things like that, but not be stuck on whether or not the checklist items have actually been submitted or not. The other thing, another provision in the ordinance discusses, when our city engineer lets a preliminary plat package comes in, he will issue many times a memorandum or an outline of questions, and preliminary plat ordinance contemplates that a response would be received from the developer with enough time for there to be at least ten days for the city engineer to review those responses to the comments and concerns prior to the planning commission meeting. So just, that's also in our ordinance. The last thing I wanted to point out is what options that you have related to preliminary plat approval request before the planning commission. So essentially, you can do four things. You can recommend approval to the city council. You can recommend approval with conditions to the city council. You can continue or table for further study, or you can deny. The first two, the approval and the approval with conditions, if you caught that, that's a recommendation. So that, those two go up to the city council, they make final determination. If you continue or table it, obviously, that does not go to the city council. That lands on a future agenda for you. You cannot continue an application without date. You have to continue it to a time certain, okay? I'll come back to that one. The last one is a denial. So under our ordinance, if you deny it, you're not recommending a denial, you're denying it. And that's where it stops, unless, within fifteen days, the applicant requests a written appeal to the city council of that denial. And in that case, if one of those comes in, it lands on the city council agenda to review your denial. If within fifteen days, a written request or appeal is not filed with the city, that constitutes the end of the process until a new preliminary plat is submitted and it starts over. The last option I wanted to come back to was that request, what was a continuance or a tabling. And you may remember in other instances where a preliminary plat approval has come up and issues of concern arise, many times, it's tabled for intermediate, for further study. Those I only recommend doing if the developer, in fact, wants that. If the developer on the record wants a continuance or wants it to be tabled, I feel like that's appropriate. Otherwise, I recommend a final decision be made tonight, whether that be approval, approval with conditions, or a denial. Any questions on that? I just felt like a little summary of the ordinance might be helpful.
Thank you. I appreciate that guidance. Commissioners, do you have any other questions for Attorney Richards?
I just want, just for clarification, on your explanation of the continuing or tabling, if that's something that the developer wants. You said that that is time certain, we have to have a time set for that, right?
Right, so, sorry, I cut you off. State code is such that you can't just continue something in perpetuity, otherwise, because then you're never giving that decision to the applicant. So you can't just say, well, we're gonna table this for some, you know, undetermined period. If you table it, you typically say, okay, we're gonna put it on our agenda next month, or we'll see it in three months, or you need to give a time certain, because there needs to be a final decision made on the application of something.
And just to clarify, the fourth action that can be taken, which is a denial, when the applicant still has fifteen days to present in writing a request made by the city council?
That's great, because in that instance, if you issue a denial on the preliminary plat request, that means the city's involvement, unless an appeal or written request, call it whatever you want, is made to the city within fifteen days, then it absolutely goes on to the city council agenda, and they make a final determination. They act as a appeal board to your decision.
And is this only applied to the preliminary?
To plat approvals, either a final or preliminary. So you remember on this, well, on the last two that you did, you recommended approval, right? So that was one of your options.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate that guidance.
Sure.
Jared, you finished with your presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a representative here from Eagle Estates?
Hi there, my name is Brent Baker. I'm not a resident of Hooper City. I'm actually an attorney with the law firm Derm Jones and Pinnaker. I represent Keystone Development. We're developing this development here, and I would like to just, first of all, explain why I'm here and why I'm involved. And then talk a little bit about the great advice you just got from Brandon Richards and the sub, and also, I'd like to say, if you guys don't know this guy, because he's been up to the podium three times today, this is Jeremy Draper, and he's also been working on our project. First of all, the reason why I'm involved, number one, is because I'm here to try to get this project approved. The, this has been a long time going. It's been eighteen months since my client has been tested, and I want to get my, this project approved, and as I told my client right at the beginning, that the way to get this project... the beginning, that the way to get this project approved is to comply with the local ordinances. And that's what we've been working on doing since I've been involved, and we're going to try to get there, because we want this project approved. Second reason why I'm involved is to sort of act as a buffer between my client and the city, because there has been some conflict in the past, and I am not going to bring conflict to the table, I'm going to bring productivity to the table. And the third reason why I'm involved is because I want to make sure this happens legally and the property rights are not violated. How to settle that? We appreciate the advice and the input that Brandon Richards gave. I have been doing land use law for over twenty years, for thirteen years I was the state property rights ombudsman. I think I know a little bit about land use law, and I've worked with Brandon many times over the years, and he's given you good advice. We have addressed the things on that list. We acknowledge, however, that we did not give that to you until probably in time. So, as stated by Brandon, we would request a continuance to the next meeting, so we can come back, give you plenty of time to look at the submissions and the answers to the things on that list, and proceed at that time. We would very much appreciate that. Again, Jeremy is here, he has been the one working on getting that checklist taken care of, we feel like it has been taken care of, everything has been addressed. He is, we're happy to answer questions right now about the progress that we've been made, and he is here to do that, but we do request that continuance. Thank you very much.
If I could jump in, what I would recommend, and we've had this happen a couple of times, because we've noticed it up as a public hearing, I think it's appropriate if the applicant wants a continuance, and he has stated on the record, and that's what I was looking for, I think it's totally appropriate to do that, we want to give them every opportunity to meet our ordinance requirements. At the same time, since we've noticed this up as a public hearing, I would recommend that you open it up and allow anyone in the public to make their comments, otherwise, when we continue it, we're going to have to renotice it as a public hearing, and we're not required to do two public hearings on that, if that makes sense.
If I could just respond to that, if we're going to have a public hearing today, that's fine, just as long as, like you suggested, we don't, you know, re-remit the wheel and try to do it again in the next meeting. One meeting and the other is, I think, what's appropriate and what the law supports. And the second comment I'd like to make is, I'd like, just like to remind everybody what the question is here that we're here to answer. The question we're here to answer is not whether or not this development is popular, or whether my client is a good guy, or whether or not we want to see this. The question we're here to answer is whether or not this development complies with the law. Okay? So, if public comment comes up, please try to keep that in mind, right? If, if, if someone can point out how it doesn't comply with the law, let us know, we'll address that. Okay? But that's the question we have, and there's a lot of people still in the room, so I assume there's been a lot of public comments, so if we're going to go with that, that's fine. But this is not a popularity contest, and this is not a, we don't like this development contest. It's a question whether or not it complies.
Fair enough. I've got a question.
Sure.
You know, you say you want to comply with ordinances and the law.
Correct.
So why is there construction going on right now, and you do not have permission to do so?
We have done nothing that requires permit at this point, and we'd be careful to do nothing that requires permit. A lot of things have been required permit, and at that point, when it requires permit, people have to permit before we do it, we do it. But this is our property, and we're just doing things on it, nothing that requires permit.
Could I ask a question also, Brandon?
Sure.
As far as the public hearing, so if this is tabled and it comes back to the commission, will the public have an opportunity to comment on that based on what they present at that time? Because if things have changed, I feel it's only fair for people to be able to look at what's happening currently and comment on that. Right now, they may have different concerns based on what was already submitted, but if those, what that submission changes, those concerns may change, so I'm just concerned.
Right, that's a good question. I think what I'm mostly concerned about is the, is the requirement to notice it up and have the public hearing on this preliminary approval, and that's been noticed up for tonight. And, I mean, I do agree with Mr. Baker, it's public comment, and so hear the public comment. It doesn't mean that you need to respond to the public comments, just hear the public comment. And there's, if there's somebody that wants to make a public comment, they've got their two, three minutes, and you can hear their public comment. To your question, if at the next meeting, somebody wants to make a comment, I think as you analyze the plat and what's been submitted, I think anything that helps you get to the point of determining whether it meets our requirements or not is okay. All right? But he's right, and I think you reckon, I don't think you need to be told that, I mean, I mean, if it meets our ordinance, it gets approved. I've never seen this body ever deny somebody who met all of our ordinance requirements, so I think that goes without saying.
It's a great point about the public comment, by the way. I know that whether or not it's legal is going to change from today to next time, but I'll leave it to your hand, you can decide either way.
I have one concern, I got a few texts on, you know, your activities out there. What are you doing to mitigate the dust? I know there's, I know four people in that neighborhood who are dealing with life-threatening cancer, and it's, and it's brought to my attention that it's been a problem. So in the daytime, it seems like you are, but at night, you know, there's, so what, what are you doing, or what can you do, or what will you do to, to prevent that?
I don't know if we've, that we've done anything extraordinary to mitigate the dust up to this point, but we're willing to take efforts to do that in the meantime.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Because once you take the vegetation out, it's dust, you know, and that accentuates the problems.
Yeah, we definitely want it, we definitely want to get going quickly, but, you know, we can take efforts to do that, to minimize the possibility of the dust later rise. We don't really do that, that's fine, we just need, we just need to move forward. Like I said, this has been eighteen months that we've invested, and this is the first time we've been in front of, in this meeting here. I'm not looking and pointing necessarily at the city because of that, though I do think the city has contributed to that, I do think that maybe folks on my side have contributed to that. There have been definite delays, and there's been definite, I will say, violations of the law up to this point that have caused these delays. But here we are finally after eighteen months, and so we need to get going, we have financing and other issues. That's why we started the work there, but the dust is a real concern, and it's a health and safety concern, and we are not interested in endangering anybody's health. So, we will do what we can.
I just had a question on the packet here, talks about how the proposed intersection does not meet city ordinance ten dash six A dash seven G. I was just wondering if you could elaborate on that, Brandon?
I could, I don't know if we need to do it, if we're going to go down the route of continuing it, let's continue, let's hear the public comment, and let's continue it, if that's what we're going to do.
My client is pretty familiar with that way, that we do have a lot of trucks out there that sweep permits, they're all posted, so, and approved, you know, all the sweep permits are being approved, but we will, we'll increase our ordinance for sure in the meantime.
So if we continue now with public comment?
Right, so I think, I think what would be appropriate based on, and I want to be clear, this is based on the applicant's request to continue, and so.
Well, we have, looks like we have several people here that.
We can respect that, but yes, I would say, hear the public comment, anybody who wants to comment, and then my suggestion would be beyond just hearing the public comment, we continue it, because it's, it's difficult to have a discussion on it as it sits at this point and come back in a month, and, and it's totally different, you have to redo the entire discussion. So I would suggest, you hear the public comment, continue it a month, and then you get into it online.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it. As our attorney has said, this is a public hearing, and we have a few letters, looks like Shawna's got a few to read into the record, and then we'll open it up for public comment, both online and people in the room.
Okay, my first public comment is from Lori Wilcox. Three specific comments regarding Keystone Land Development for a new subdivision in approximately forty-one hundred south, fifty-nine hundred west, SR three seven, known as Eagle State subdivision. This is, I have number five on the planning commission agenda. I understand that this developer's proposed thirty-four homes to be built within the subdivision. I was only under, I was under the impression that that one Hooper City opened up the general plan. If it wasn't approved prior to the final reopening, nothing was going to be approved until the general plan was finalized. If this is not the case, then the planning commission should have let residents of Hooper that information, should have let residents put through that information. If it is a legal issue, then the planning commission should have talked to the city attorney beforehand to ensure that it was able to approve the moratorium that was discussed at the meeting. My various concerns are as follows. How big will each lot be? I would hope that these would be at least half acre or more. I've only seen the lot layout and have concerns regarding the entrance and the exit of the subdivision. The bend in the road is already a major risk factor. I constantly see people speeding around the corner, and would hate to see a severe accident at that location. Has the state approved the entrance slash exit to the subdivision? How is the, how is it going to affect our water and food systems? Will it put them in even more strain on our vacuum sewer system beyond current use? Will the lots be on the water or irrigation water? How will they land? How will this affect our town's drinking water? How will this affect our schools? Will this cause more strain on our class size? Will there be a crosswalk with flashlights to put in close to the subdivision for children to walk to and from school if needed? Will sidewalks be installed along fifty-nine hundred west, SR three seven to accommodate safety of the children walking to and from school? Thirty-four lots with the family moving will impact various things, including road safety and infrastructure for Hooper. Will emergency services be able to accommodate additional posts for thirty-four lots? Will our roads now need even more improvement due to new traffic? How will this affect our land around the subdivision? How is this proposed development rule in nature, and how is it respectful of these patterns of the past and present? How does this proposal provide ample open space? Will this affect our taxes? Will this, will this subdivision keep our community values, such as heritage, small-town value, multi-generational? I do not like new development in our beautiful town, especially this side. I do, however, understand that growth is inevitable, but it needs to be done correctly. I would like to see people remain small and multi-generational, over as the town I choose for my family to grow up in, and specifically for a small town with the safety, the heritage, and the history. I hope the planning commission will wholeheartedly review this matter and address the concerns mentioned above. I would also hope that the planning commission is in fact keeping with the planning survey opinions that citizens of Hooper have already responded to, if not, when and why are they requesting the citizen's opinion? Thank you for your time and consideration, Lori Wilcox. Next is Bill Douglas. What work has been, what work has been to address traffic hazards on the bend of forty-thousand south and fifty-nine hundred west with the bend prone to bad traffic and accidents? Developments to the northeast and now west and south have farcied the design for safe ingress and ingress to the neighborhoods surrounding this new proposed development. Traffic has increased dramatically in the area, the bend is not safe for vehicles entering or leaving four thousand south of fifty-nine hundred west. Have archaeological impacts for the possible native burial grounds been explored? Hooper historian John Bellknap's history of Hooper indicated three thousand two hundred Native Americans frequently frequented that area. There have been reports of native artifacts and even human remains being found in the area. Has the Northerne Shoshone tribe been approached about possible impacts? Bill Douglas. Next is by Scott Moore. My wife and I own the property west of the proposed Eagle State subdivision, and very concerned about drainage in the southwest corner of our subdivision. Development of lots eighteen and through twenty-one will have severe negative impacts on existing wetlands and drainage. The natural flow of water from properties on the south and west side is into the ponds and slough that drink into the northwest. Distributing the nat, disturbing the natural water flow will cause flooding on my property for irrigation water and any excess, any excessive precipitation. I would like to hear what the planners were handling drained in the area. Next is by Sandy Simpson. More lots than approved for last developer for the zoning changes, more traffic on fifty-nine hundred west, not enough water for the number of lots, questions about sewer, no permits for any of the work currently being done, dangers of the curve in the road, four thousand south to fifty-nine hundred west, where is the water going to drain? New four thousand south road using corral for the slaughter area several times a week. Next one is by Derek Bailey. Because of the close proximity of the proposed subdivision and another proposed subdivision east, we would request that the intersection on the curve be addressed with UDOT to make the area, make the area safer for all vehicles using that road. The two proposed subdivisions will add a lot of additional traffic, and now is it time to work on things for everyone's safety. West end of the proposed subdivision has a pond that absorbs the drains and drains irrigation wastewater and stormwater. There are two of our agricultural drain fields that have drained into that pond for more than thirty years. It is critical that the pond approximate water level be maintained so that the field drains function properly. These drains keep the farm grounds prime for raising excellent crops and are right-ofway quality farm ground. If the water level of the pond is to be raised, the field drains will not function. Next is Robert and Diane Whitson. We received a letter from Hooper City dated March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one regarding a request from Keystone Land Development for a new subdivision of approximately forty-one hundred south, fifty-nine hundred west, and Hooper Utah. Following are our concerns and comments to be considered at the public meeting to be held April eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. Why is this, why is this contractor being allowed to do work on a property prior to approval for the subdivision? Is the contractor going to force Hooper to approve the subdivision with a threat of a lawsuit because of the money and work already invested? We have watched a lot of activity with pipes being buried southwest and west of our home. He has inspection, has any inspection or approval taken place prior to the pipes being buried? We do not want a drainage issue because of the neglect of the contractor not doing prior work to approval and inspection of the proper drainage. We have also watched a lot of activity with road construction south and southwest of our home. Has the state of Utah granted a right-of-way access of the subdivision to the location? It is closer to the fifty-nine hundred west and four thousand south curves than the right-of-way access roads that have been denied by the state of Utah for being unsafe. There are already a lot of trucks that have kept track of our fifty-nine hundred west from this developer. A good share of Hooper residents still do not have sewer connected. Why are these subdivisions fast-tracked to the head of the line? Shouldn't we take care of Hooper residents first? Do we have enough secondary water and groundwater to supply the subdivision and others to the north end of Hooper? Two-thirds of the lots are only one hundred feet of frontage, while two lots are less than ninety feet of frontage, and one lot is less than ninety-five feet of frontage. When is the right-of-way allowance for the frontage? Is proper consideration and protection being taken for wetlands on its property? We love this community and know that we, and we must develop wisely. We want to have a wonderful community in twenty to fifty years. When Nate Brockbain purchased his property, he talked to the neighbors and asked about concerns. Mr. Aldrich has done none of that. Thank you for your consideration. Robert and Diane.
Just one clarification, my wife did not write that. I don't know if it did, it's her name.
Which is okay.
I think there's another Lori Wilcox.
Oh, is there?
I think so.
Oh, okay. All right.
Shawna, are there any other people online who would like to comment before we come to the people in house?
I don't have anyone that's.
Okay. Seeing none, then we're going to open it up to public comments of those people in attendance to this meeting. If you have something to say, you need to limit your comments to at least three minutes, and give us the facts.
Give us the facts. My name is Brent Loserlein, and my house is in that picture, four one six six south fifty-nine hundred west, directly across the street from where that subdivision will be entering and leaving fifty-nine hundred west. I also want to say, perception is reality, and to have a preliminary approval meeting when construction is happening and by their own omission, their package is not ready yet, they shouldn't be on the agenda according to your attorney, what's, what's, what's the reason for moving this so fast? So, my recommendation would be just to deny it, make me start over again. It's wasting my time, I just sat there for two hours to find out if this is going to be tabled, and we're going to talk about it again. It's, it's, it's aggravating. It seems like it got fast-tracked, it's not ready yet, and they're already moving on, and that's frustrating. So, I don't have any questions, just wanted to make those comments. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate your comments. Other people in the room who would like to comment? Other people in the room who would like to comment? Step forward and state your name and address, please.
Natalie Seawick, fifty-sixty-seven south, fifty-three hundred west. I agree with the gentleman, I kept saying, I'm sorry, but I agree with you. They've had plenty of time to do this. The attorney spoke of eighteen months. They can't get this done in eighteen months, there's problem. For everything that she just read, I'm sorry Shawna?
Sure.
That Shawna just read, there are a lot of problems with this development going on. I think a lot of things have not been inspected. There's pipes that are being buried. Is there anybody, has anybody been out to inspect them? The attorney says they're doing everything legally, not calling you a liar. But I'm asking the council, has anybody inspected anything?
Do you want, I can respond just generally because I feel like there's going to be a lot of comments that are very similar. Whatever, whatever work is being done out there is being done absolutely with zero permit, zero inspection, and zero approval by the city. The city is aware of what's going on out there and we will keep monitoring it. But no, there has been no inspections and no approvals.
I find that to be very concerning. I, I just would like to reiterate everything that Shawna's read to us. And I would agree with the gentleman before me, how to deny this development and make them start over. There's too many questions out there. We haven't even looked at the pipes, we haven't looked at what they're done. We haven't, you know, verified what they're saying, as we all know very well. Sometimes it's a bit painful. We did a field trip not very long ago and with the mayor and we drove around and we looked at a couple of things that have been done that developers just kind of sneak in there and it's making Hooper look like West Haven or Roy or Clinton. It was done very poorly and I think that we should just flat out deny this and make them come back when they have all their ducks in order because right now there's just too many questions out there.
Come forward, please.
Hi, Davis Weston. I live on forty-two hundred south, just east of this development. I spent three terms on the city council and many terms on the Hooper township planning commission and I appreciate that. But the development is, you know, moving on Hooper and we're excited for new neighbors and people coming in. So there's nothing that holds that. The concern I have is, I think Mr. Wilcox talked about it. I have a wife with stage four metastatic cancer which has spread to her lungs. Since this development has been started and it's been unsupervised, unexpected, the dust problem has created a situation where she can't even go outside even with a mask because it's complicating her breathing. I would like to see some oversight on the dust control, whether it comes from the local health department or if they, I don't see no silt or dust screens anywhere, piles of dirt that are exposed to the wind and with the storms we've had lately, the dry conditions, it compounds and creates a problem. So, you know, no problem, don't worry about more people moving into Hooper because that's going to happen. But with the way this has been approached with no oversight, I'm very concerned that, you know, the owner and the developer and his attorney are all taking personal responsibility for health conditions if they're not being following the health department rules. And so I would like to see something done on that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments in the room tonight? Okay, seeing none, then we'll close this public comment portion of the meeting and bring it back here to the commissioners for discussion.
I have a couple of questions for Brandon. Sorry. As far as what Mr. Weston was just referring to, to your knowledge, are there any health department rules that are being broken right now with this or?
I, I mean, I'll say this, it's, it's concerning if, if there's dust that's out of control. And so I think that's a comment that's very well taken and I, and I think it should be looked into further. And I think the city should look into that, whatever we can do to help with that, I think would be appropriate, so.
And in your professional opinion, you mentioned that you would advise tabling this. My understanding is if we deny it, they can appeal it to the city council. We haven't had a chance to really look at everything. So we really, really don't know what we're pushing through possibly. But the idea that the city council will look at something we have not seen and could possibly approve it. So tabling it, we would be able to at least look at what we're, what we're dealing with.
And that's a good point. There's two, there's two sides to table and I mean, obviously the applicant wants it tabled because they want to do whatever they want to do in the interim before they have it actually discussed by the commission. But that's a good point as well. The flip side of that is if you denied it, that in my view necessarily just means that it's going to move up to the city council. And it would probably be different somewhat, maybe a lot than what you've seen in the memo and whatnot. So you maintain a certain amount of control on your end. It's not just entirely doing what the developer wants, it's also maintaining control as a commission to make an informed decision when it comes back in a month. I, that being said, I also can sympathize with the fact that we don't want to keep continuing this on and on and on. At some point, the benefit to the, to the commission to do what you just mentioned maybe reaches the limit and you decide, no matter what the applicant wants, we don't want to keep continuing this. But I feel like one request for a continuance is reasonable and it gives the applicant every opportunity to comply with our ordinances. And on the flip side, it allows you to be able to see a fully submitted preliminary approval package. And that's the basis for my suggestion. Of course, you have the ultimate say on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion?
I personally like the idea of being able to see what we're moving forward. And not that a denial is moving it forward, but that does take out our ability to see what's being presented. And I think something like this, there's been a lot of public comment. I think there are some very valid concerns that need to be addressed. And I think that's why we have a planning commission as well as city council so that I think the more eyes we can have on this, the better. That would be my opinion.
Thank you. I'm going to state something, just in looking at the memo that was presented here. The first four items, five items on the memo. Number one is a thirty-four lot subdivision. And our ordinances say that twenty-five lots is the maximum per phase. And this isn't being, this has got thirty-four lots in it, so that's non-compliant. Many of them are within the wetlands area, which is also in my opinion, non-compliant. This many lots needs two ingress and egresses. It only has one, so that's non-compliant. Secondly, the one ingress that appears as if they're digging is non-compliant with our ordinance because it's more than, it's not eight hundred feet from either intersection. And so it creates a safety issue. So where that road is, where they're, where they're digging on their lot right now that appears as if it might be what they want to put in for a road is a safety issue. And the fifth item regarding the, the vacuum sewer, the memo says that it cannot be served by the existing vacuum sewer system. So we need some kind of a plan to show how, how we're going to allow these people to flush their toilets, basically. Because the vacuum sewer system can't serve that right now. So there's a lot of things that need to be addressed here.
Excuse me, my question is, is this on your agenda to deal with some issues? Do you, do you know, Brandon?
I do know. What I'll, what I'll say here would be to say that we put it on the agenda at the repeated request of the developer. And that's why it's on your agenda.
So it's not like the lawyer goes around and applies that the city was basically up to nefarious acts preventing it or something like that? And clearly this is not the, the normal operation method, right?
Right, and I'm not going to speak to the comments made about whether we committed illegal acts or anything like that in an open meeting. But no, this is on your agenda because of repeated requests from the developer to be put onto your agenda. So it's on your agenda. That being said, it now is very apparent that they would like to have a continuance to be able to put everything in order and address the questions that you have. And I feel like that's an appropriate request, at least right now. And we'll see what happens at the next meeting.
And I would say that a one-time continuance might be reasonable since this is the first time it's come around to us and they have a whole laundry list of things that need to be made right. And if, if we as a body here tonight just flat deny it, then they do have the right to take it up to the city council and then we don't see it. We don't see it.
I mean, I agree, I just consider that they push so hard.
We won't let it out of our hands yet.
I think they're really pushing so hard and on agendas and then ask for continuance. But I'm, I'm appreciative of that's, it's Brandon's recommendation, I think that's what we're doing.
Our next commission meeting is on May thirteenth. Is one month sufficient?
I suggest put it out one month.
Yep.
And then?
And then we'll see, seeing what happens. I mean, there are a lot of concerns.
It needs to be complete. It needs to be complete. That's, that's the standard we as a planning commission and basically the housing authority for the purpose stated is that when things are presented to us, they're complete. There's no contingencies, there's no subject twos, there's no, okay, we'll get that, it's complete or it's not. And if it's not, it doesn't come to us.
He's kind of like, I'll just ask him, what is the plan for you guys doing work out there over the next month? Are you going to continue to do, you know, moving dirt or even?
The reason why I just came up here is to let you know that I think persuaded my client to back off on the work that's being done and focus on the dust control. And so I think that's a fair thing to, to alleviate concerns. We don't want any concerns and as I said before, you know, my reason for asking the continuance is because we want to comply. We feel like we have, we just need time to show you that.
Is one, is one month enough?
One month.
I should ask you, is that?
One month is fine.
Okay. So let's just do a motion then.
Okay. Almost, are you paying for motions?
With, with, with the, the end of our discussions here, we would entertain a motion now regarding this preliminary approval for Eagle State subdivision.
I will motion for a continuance until our next planning commission meeting on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-one for the preliminary approval of Eagle State subdivision, forty-one hundred south and fifty-nine hundred west.
I'll say a motion.
We have a motion to table this?
Jumping out.
No, you're fine. We, you're, you're good. It is late. We do have a motion to table this for one month. And I would strongly encourage you to bring back a complete package because, you know, everybody's time is wasted. So the motion is to table it for one month and we have it seconded by Commissioner Wilcox. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous vote. This item is tabled until May. We do have an opportunity for any citizens here if they'd like to make, bring up new business or make a public comment. I'll open it up for just a minute. We've got three minutes.
I just need to ask a question. We own the property forty-eight eighty-nine south sixty-two hundred west. And when they developed the property south or north of us, they had them install a nice fence to separate our agriculture property from the homes. Who's in charge of taking care of that? The homeowners that bought the property or us? They seem to think it's us, we don't know.
Taking care of the fence?
Yeah. So it's a bad repair, but no one seems to know who owns it.
And do we depend on whose property the fence lies?
Right, of the property, mine. The fence was put in before the homeowner, before they bought it and we didn't pay for it.
It may be something that city staff might have to look into a little bit to try to figure it out.
Yeah. Who needs to look at that?
If you, if you wanted to come and talk with the front office here at the city, correct me if I'm wrong, but look into that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, then this meeting would be adjourned if someone would make that motion.
Sorry, can I make one more comment?
Okay.
Is that all right? I just want to encourage everybody, just a reminder that we currently have survey number two out for the revision on the general plan that we're working on. It's really, really important that you take the time to fill that survey out. You can fill it out, it's mailed out to each household. You can also go online. Please encourage your neighbors to let their voice be heard. We really do want to hear what the people in the community want and that will really help us in shaping what we're doing in the future. So that's all.
And where's the maps back there that we reviewed, comments on as well?
Yes, those, those maps back there help to explain what we're trying to do or kind of what the vision is and their comment cards. I would, we would really appreciate getting comments from our citizenry. And those will be up until the fifteenth of April, I believe, or maybe a little bit later. You're welcome to come in here during office hours and look at the maps and make your comments. That being said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll motion to adjourn.
And?
I will say that.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.